All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council in Oregon and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of City Council, everyone is present, and if you will stand, our Clements High School Junior ROTC will lead us on our pledge of allegiance and post our colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, Council, members of the public, we want to take this opportunity to recognize one of our own who has now gone off into retirement as of last Friday, that is Kendall Litchfield. He served as our IT Director for the past nine years, and previous to that, he'd been with the city a total of nineteen, and he also served in another capacity in another city for three years, and I guess two years actually, and had a total of twenty-one years of public service to communities. And he actually began his career with us as in our accounting department doing tax collections, and I remember him telling me stories about, at the time, the computer systems we had, called for him to have a cot next to the printing system for all the tax bills because they would get caught up and it would cause problems, so Kendall would have to sleep there overnight, keep the bills coming out so that everybody would get their tax bill, so you have Kendall to thank for that.
Called overtime.
But, in all seriousness, I have to say that I've served with Kendall for five and a half years, and during the time that I've been with him, and then looking back over the history of the city, and as you think about nineteen years with a city in information technology, Kendall has been responsible for a great deal of what's taken place here. Technology is something that's really come on in the past twenty years, and Kendall's been here in this city, in one city, taking care of that for nineteen of those twenty years, if you think about all the advancements that have been made. And he graduated from college and then started on a Friday and started here on a Monday, so Kendall has been a good public servant to us, and he has always been here on time and always providing great service to both the citizens and to internal customers, us the employees. And I, excuse me, I just want to also mention that it's a testament to what we've been able to do is given in an IT assessment that was done by an outside firm of the city two years ago, and reading from that, I just want to state that this is what they said. "The overall state of this infrastructure is solid as a result of several key projects that have occurred over the last year. City's infrastructure strategy is sound, consistent with the architecture and future direction of typical IT organization for 2010. City may be technologically ahead of most municipalities in the state, similar size and budget, and even that of cities across the United States." And I think that speaks volumes for Kendall, as I said, he's been here the whole time, and again, I just want to thank you for all you've done, I know everybody in this room can also say that as well, and you've served them individually and holistically. So Kendall, today, a small token of our appreciation, if you'd come up.
Computerized clock.
Is it?
Yeah.
Reboot it?
Yeah, you have to reboot it.
Thank you for your nineteen years' service in the city.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We need to get IT in here now.
Thank you very much to the City Council and to all the staff here that have supported me in my professional development, and I would like to say that if it weren't for you, I could not be where I am at this point in time, and I enjoy, want to enjoy a little time off before I hit a second career, but I want to say thanks to the staff and to City Council for supporting me, IT, and all the guys for all that we try to do to make this city a better place to work and try to make things keep going. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Kendall.
Thank you.
Hey, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to do this evening is to present to the city an award that was given to us last week at the Texas Economic Development Council meeting in Austin. We have a group called the Community Economic Development Awards that's awarded each year, and what they do is they look to honor excellence and exceptional contributions in economic development. And what they do, they have four, five criteria. One is innovativeness and approaches to economic development, two, transferability, meaning can it be done, two, how can other people learn and use what you've done, three, community commitment and leverageability, which is really, I think, is key in having private-public partnerships and total leverage of your economic development with the other communities, measurable objectives with jobs, investments, what kind of return is the city going to get, and the secondary benefits really to the community, and this was done through our Niagara project, and the secondary benefits, I think, are going to be great in a lot of different ways. Just two examples, one is WCID Number Two, which is the water district that will certainly benefit from that and will help some of their loss in the company, one of the companies they're losing, but number two is the company itself in Niagara. We found in dealing with them to be a great company that really wants to give back to the community, and as the mayor said last week, you know, they've already started that before, they've even put one piece of steel up. So I just want to say thanks to everybody. It really was a commitment that was made by the whole group of the people involved from the Greater Fort Bend EDC, the Greater Houston Partnership, CenterPoints EDC, and then our other partners here with WCID Number Two. So again, Mayor, what you have is the award that was given to us.
Yeah, let me just read it.
Sure.
I read this award, and let me just say that Bob was very kind in the words that he said, but we were up against some very significant projects. I won't mention any in particular close by, and another city close by.
They have a ballpark?
Oh, that's right, they have a ballpark, don't they, yeah. But anyway, there were some outstanding projects that were submitted, and you know, we were very fortunate, I think, once again, for this city to be recognized for the things that we as a City Council and everything has done in the last year, but this one is very significant because, you know, like I said, there were a lot of choices out there. We submitted Benny Keith last year, did not win. We submitted Niagara Water this year, unfortunately, were picked, but this award says it's 2012 Community Economic Development Award, City of Missouri City, in recognition of exemplary achievement in community economic development, presented September 26, 2012, by the Texas Economic Development Council. So I was very pleased to be there with the city manager and Bob and those partners that Bob mentioned, that you have to have, to make these projects work, you have to have power, so you had CenterPoint there, you had to have water, WCID Number Two was there, you had to have a tax abatement, so the county was there. Actually, the project was brought to us by the Greater Houston Partnership, and they were there and the Fort Bend Economic Development Council. So it was a great partnership, and I think that's probably what made the decision easier for the committee to pick us, but it's a great award. Okay. Somebody have their, put your band on? Put your band on. This is a proclamation that says that whereas Substance Abuse Prevention Month is an opportunity for families, friends, and our community to raise public awareness of substance abuse, experience has shown us that many innovative and effective approaches to dealing with adolescent drug and alcohol use begins at the community level, and whereas substance abuse among our youth is treatable, however, it is known that early intervention is key in addressing every symptom associated with substance abuse. The stress of families affected by substance abuse is immense, and whereas the Fort Bend Regional Council was organized to provide families and individuals substance abuse prevention, education, and treatment services they need for a positive change for themselves and the community, the City of Missouri City is proud to join them in this mission and commend them for their unwavering commitment and encouragement to those battling with substance abuse disorders in our community, and whereas Substance Abuse Prevention Month raises awareness about the dangers of substance abuse and its effects, it offers hope to all who deal with the hardships of these disorders by uniting all of Fort Bend County to address this urgent global crisis. Together, we will solve this problem. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby claim the month of October 2012 to be Substance Abuse Prevention Month in Missouri City.
Good evening, I'm Irene Wisner with Fort Bend Regional Council, and I want to thank Mayor Owens and Missouri City Council for bestowing this proclamation for us. The latter two weeks in October is a National Red Ribbon Week, which brings forth the awareness of the dangers of alcohol and substance abuse, and we have been servicing, Fort Bend Regional Council has been servicing the Fort Bend community since 1976 with offices in Stafford and Rosenberg, and we do outpatient treatment, individual treatment, parenting classes, we have counselors in all three school districts in LCISD, and we have counselors in the two alternative schools in Fort Bend ISD, which obviously we want in the health classes to bring forth the dangers to our kids and educate them on the dangers of alcohol and substance abuse. So I want to thank the City of Missouri City for doing this for us.
This proclamation says that whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their communities, and whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the City of Missouri City, Texas, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service for those professionals. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Community Planning Month in the City of Missouri City in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Jennifer, are you coming up here?
Yes.
You got anybody else you want to bring with you? Yeah, bring all that staff up here. Gary?
The whole group.
Coming up, Gary?
I think the planner should come along.
I do too. Come on up. Don't be sitting back there, you want to say something?
Yeah. I do, I'll be very brief. Missouri City has celebrated National Community Planning Month for the past five years, and if you know Missouri City, if you've driven around Missouri City, if you, you know, live in Missouri City, then you see the effects and the commitment that past and current elected officials are planning and zoning commission and city staff have had on planning, community planning. Missouri City is a zone community, which is different from our larger neighbor, and so different council and city staff, planning and zoning, have implemented the zoning regulations, landscaping regulations, architectural design regulations, and just a whole slew of different types of regulations that have impacted our physical character of our community. So we're really proud of the contributions that Missouri City has made and the commitment that Missouri City has made to the profession of planning. Thank you.
I think it looks nice, Russell. It looks real nice, almost as nice as a police officer's new firefighter's uniform. We kidded about that, didn't we, this weekend? Let me just read this proclamation, says that whereas the State of Texas and the City of Missouri City are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all of those living and visiting our great state and city, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas home fires kill more than 2,600 people in the United States in 2010, according to the latest research from the nonprofit National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 369,000 home fires, and whereas only one-third of Americans have both developed and practiced a home fire escape plan. Almost three-quarters of Americans do have an escape plan, however, less than half have actually practiced it. One-third of American households who have an escape plan estimate they would have at least six minutes before a fire in their home had become life-threatening, however, the time available is often less. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. First responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Residents are responsible to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2012 Fire Prevention Week theme, Have Two Ways Out, effectively serves to remind us to develop and practice a home fire escape plan during Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim October the 7th through the 13th, 2012, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and encourage all the people of Missouri City to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2012 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Texas Fire and Emergency Services. You want to get your group up here?
Yes, sir.
Chief Brazwell and Lieutenant Butler, if we bring your crew up here real fast. Couple of things real fast. It is Fire Prevention Week next week, and at the fire department, this coming Saturday, October 6th, at Fire Station 1 at 3849 Cartwright, we're having a first annual open house. During that open house, we can actually help you design your escape plan and have the two ways out. We'll actually have a smokehouse also for kids to practice getting two ways out, and practicing these very important life-saving measures that is the theme this year. Additionally, you'll have the opportunity to learn how to operate a fire extinguisher, and the kids will actually have a chance to maybe fight their own little fire. So we have a lot of activities planned from 9:00 to 1:00, October 6th, at Fire Station 1 at 3849 Cartwright. And also too, the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we, along with the fire departments of Richmond, Sherland, Rosenberg, and Stafford, are all wearing pink this month as awareness to breast cancer. Thank you, Chief Brazwell. So we care enough, Missouri City Fire and Rescue Services cares enough to wear pink, and this is just a reminder for all the citizens that, especially ladies, annuals exams, knowing your history, early detection is the most important thing, and we proudly support this measure. It's throughout the nation that the fire service is doing this, and we're glad to be a part of that, and you know, Missouri City Fire and Rescue, we do care about the health and wellness of our citizens, so this month, we care enough to wear pink. So you'll be seeing us wearing pink t-shirts throughout the month, and please, they're bright and pink, and I'd like to thank Leonetti Graphics and Stat Care Emergency Services Group for helping us with this endeavor, so thank you.
And you didn't tell them when to change the batteries in the smoke detector. You didn't tell them when it's time to change.
They like savings time.
They like savings time.
Which is not until November this year.
I know, but remind people to do that.
We'll do that in November, come back.
Maybe we can get Council pink shirts. What do you think, huh? Oh, I know, you want to wear it next meeting?
I'm going to wear it Saturday at the open house. I will add that the auxiliary is going to be offering refreshments and snacks and things at the open house, so everyone please attend.
Very good. All right. Going back to the regular agenda item four, public comments, it's an opportunity for anyone to address council on any issue that's not an agenda item, I had none. Item five are staff reports. We're ready for our semi, no, it better be more than semi-annual status report from our economic development coordinator.
Mayor, Council, thank you again for the opportunity to kind of give you an update on what's been going on really the past six months. We've had a lot of activity, as you know, especially in the two business parks that we have, the Lakeview Business Park and also the Beltway Business Crossing, and these have been key, as you know, to getting new businesses to take a look at Missouri City. What I want to do is just kind of bring you an update on what's been happening in these two particular areas and then a couple others that's going on. In Beltway, number one, Benny Keith is continuing the progress, as you know, a couple weeks ago, we renamed the street, or council did, the entryway, which will be the main entrance off of South Gessner, and they had a pretty good group out there in the ceremony. This is what the design of their whole complex looks like. It's a seven-building complex, and as you know, this is, they've been working now for over a year and a half on the facility. This gives you kind of a good example of what the progress has been made. This was in June, some of the other ones at the other angles, you can see, this is the main warehouse, which will have the coal storage and the hot storage. Behind it, you can see the other two business projects that I'll mention to you in just a minute. But anyway, this is just to give you an idea of where they stand. They hope to be open probably now, it looks like first quarter of next year, and operational by the end of the first quarter, or starting around, sorry, end of the second quarter. It's just taken a while to get everything put together, and they want to be in there pretty quick. But this, again, just shows you the progress that has been made. A lot of times when you drive by, you don't get a good feel for really what's happening on the ground there. This is laying of the parking lot, they have that now, they can actually enter the facility. This is some of the interior work that's been going on, so as you know, I do like to do slides, so keep up, I'll go pretty quickly through some of these. But if you have an idea or something, let me know. This is a truck wash area where they'll be working on the trucks, and then this is the last building to kind of get off the ground. This is actually the office. If you look at the facility from the front, as you're driving Benny Keith Way, it's off to the right, and so this is kind of what's been taking them a little while to get started, and this is kind of what has put them behind, so. This is what the project will look like when it finishes, and it'll be a great-looking building, interior, this is the interior of the offices. So this is the final product when we will see it sometime early next year. Twin Star Bakery is another company that last year, the City Council granted tax abatement in late December to create this 267,000-square-foot building. They'll initially employ about 100 people, as they continue to expand, they'll be up to 300. What Twin Star is, is a bakery, and they'll be baking cookies, desserts, and they'll be distributing them all throughout the United States. What you see on this particular slide, the top one is a nut-free bakery, and then a bakery below it that will have nuts, and then the frozen food area is over to the side, few nuts anyway. This is what the building looks like pretty much today. We've done a lot of work on it, it's going to be another great addition to the South Gessner-Beltway Crossing area, and as you can see, they are still shooting for the November 1st opening, so they've done a lot of work, and we're getting pretty close to having another company start with a job fair and hiring people. Stream Realty is the company that put up the two buildings, where Professional Packaging and where Charmin Charlie's are now. They liked the reception they got from Missouri City so well, and they had bought enough land to do two more speculative buildings, and what you see over here on the left of it is the area where they're doing the two new buildings, two more spec buildings, one will be 91,000 square feet, and this is a picture of where they stand right now, they're pretty close to being completed with the main outside of the shell, and then they'll also be creating a 116,000-square-foot building. And in talking to them, they have several people that are very interested in that, and you know, today's time to build a spec building, they have to believe in, you know, the city they're in and where they're at, and they certainly have done so with Missouri City. So anyway, this is making progress, and we'll have hopefully some more manufacturing/distribution companies here soon. One thing I wanted to mention to you is we're going to have a new company that is the first in Missouri City and Fort Bend County called Fort Bend Brewing. They have bought a building over here on South Gessner and have actually started work at 13770 South Gessner, putting together... So this is the final product when we will see it sometime early next year. Twin Star Bakery is another company that last year, the city council granted tax abatement in late December to create this 267,000-square-foot building. They'll initially employ about 100 people. As they continue to expand, they'll be three, up to 300. What Twin Star is, is a bakery, and they'll be baking cookies, desserts, and they'll be distributing them all throughout the United States. What you see on this particular slide, the top one is a nut-free bakery, and then a bakery below it that will have nuts. And then the frozen food area is over to the side, few nuts anyway. This is what the building looks like pretty much today. We've done a lot of work on it. It's going to be another great addition to the South Gessner-Beltway Crossing area. And as you can see, they are still shooting for the November the 1st opening. So they've done a lot of work, and we're getting pretty close to having another company start with a job fair and hiring people. Stream Realty is the company that put up the two buildings, where Professional Packaging and where Charmin Charlie's are now. They liked the reception they got from Missouri City so well, and they had bought enough land to do two more speculative buildings. And what you see over here on the left of it is the two, the area where they're doing the two new buildings, two more spec buildings. One will be 91,000 square feet, and this is a picture of where they stand right now. They're pretty close to being completed with the main outside of the shell. And then they'll also be creating a 116,000-square-foot building. And in talking to them, they have several people that are very interested in that. And, you know, today's time to build a spec building, they have to believe in, you know, the city they're in and where they're at, and they certainly have done so with Missouri City. So anyway, this is making progress, and we'll have hopefully some more manufacturing, distribution companies here soon. One thing I wanted to mention to you is we're going to have a new company that is the first in Missouri City and Fort Bend County called Fort Bend Brewery. They have bought a building over here on South Gessner and have actually started work at 11, 13770 South Gessner, putting together their offices and brewery. This is the interior portion of it where they're at now. I know they wanted to be open by Halloween or October or November, but it looks like it's going to be a little bit longer. But they have started getting equipment, and the equipment came in from overseas, and they're storing it there, getting ready to start putting it all together once they get the office completed itself. So this is their logo, this is their name, and again, there'll be, every label on there should say Missouri City. So another good brand for Missouri City. Over at Lakeview Business Park, we've seen several new additions recently that we talked about before. One of them is Southwest Electronics. This is a 56,000-square-foot building that's just now completed. In fact, they'll be moving in next Monday, and they manufacture lithium-ion batteries. So this is a good, a great addition to our overall mix there in the business park itself. Another company that we were really very proud to get was last year in July of 2011, actually, when they made the commitment to buy this building, which was 156,000-square-foot building. They are distributor of different types of bows, fittings, flanges, and they have, you can see here, some of the product they have that's out there in the field, and that's not counting what they have inside. So this, again, they've actually outgrown the yard already. They bought 31 acres, and they're already expanding into the area that they were hoping to be expanding to in about three years. So that's how well their growth is going. And the other, a couple others I wanted to mention to you is, obviously, we know the council passed a tax abatement back in May for Niagara. This is a rendering of what the building will similarly be look like, may not be exactly like this, but this is where they're located. They're taking most of the area in the middle of the two circle, the circle area that is being completed, the roads and regular, rest of the infrastructure now is underway. What's interesting about this is it's a 356,000-square-foot building. This is what the area looks like when they have started the grading, and it's not a good picture here, but this is the best I could do. This is really, they've laid the foundation. So they're making very good progress, and they are going to be, water is going to be coming out of there on February the 1st. That's their goal.
Yay.
And so, anyway, had an opportunity...
So we got to have water to wash all that food down we put nowhere, right?
With the beer and the food.
Beer and water, and, you know, one of those things.
We had a good, had an opportunity to go out to California a couple of weeks ago and tour their facility in Ontario, and, you know, they were, I was pretty amazed with what I saw, and they said, "You hadn't seen anything yet until you see the new equipment they're bringing in here to Missouri City." So it's going to be awesome to look at. Something I wanted to mention tonight is something that probably not too many people know about. We've kind of kept this in limbo, not riding with bimbo, this is actually bimbo. Bimbo Bakeries own all of these companies, as you see to the right, and what they're going to be doing is they're going to be building a 20,000-square-foot building in Lakeview Business Park, and they're going to basically distribute all types of bread products. They'll be baked somewhere else, brought here, and then distributed out at the end of the day or at the end of the night. This is very similar to what Mission Foods does over on South Gessner and Beltway. And just a couple other things, the Hampton Inn at Colonial Lakes is underway, four stories. They'll have, I think, 64 guest rooms, and I'm not sure about the completion date, but it's in the process. And then the only, the last thing I just wanted to mention was the Walmart opening. We had the second Walmart open a couple of weeks ago, and so we're seeing more and more retail, obviously, looking at Missouri City. As we continue to add more people, we definitely need more retail. So any particular question I can answer?
Yes, I do. I have a comment.
Sure.
We've been very pleased to have Greater Houston Partnership, who has been a procuring cause to help bring in big company to Missouri City, evidently the Niagara. So I strongly suggest that we have a plan of action to work closely with them. Are you aware of that the Greater Houston Partnership will be collaborating with the World Bank to lead a delegation to Indonesia and Vietnam in October? So seeing a lot of these companies also have an international base, they do buy and sell internationally. So I would like to see that you get them involved, because what we see over here is the result of the outreach of the marketing from Greater Houston Partnership. And I only hope that the greater economic footprint get more involved with the Greater Houston Partnership.
I think one of the things that's important here is we do have a lot of great partners in the Houston area, and we're a little bit different than a lot of areas, even Dallas, some of the other suburbs around the state. We have a great relationship both with Greater Houston Partnership, Center Point, Greater Fort Bend EDC, and we do work together very closely with them on a lot of different projects. As I mentioned earlier, the Niagara project, when they came to Houston, they want, they went first to the Greater Houston Partnership because they knew of their reputation, and they knew of Lakeview Business Park, and that was one of the reasons that we got to see that particular account. This and one, two other cities in Houston were looked at, and they were, they did the initial work to show them, you know, what type of product is out there. So they do a great job. You're right, Councilman.
Bob, going back to the, and I failed to mention it, it's going back to the award that we received this past week. All of those other projects either had 4B or the Texas Enterprise Fund that contributed towards those projects. Ours was all in-house.
Right.
And that was, that was a huge difference, I thought, because we don't have the Enterprise Fund. I mean, there was a $7 million, you and I both saw a $7 million project there that got a $1,500,000 from the Texas Enterprise Fund.
Right.
And then other cities that submitted projects that have 4B corporations where we don't because of our penny going to Metro, but I just think that's very important to people to know that it's with those partnerships and the tax abatement and having a county and people who agree, and even the water district agreeing to it.
Absolutely.
We couldn't get those. We don't have that other source that other cities do, so it's a huge plus to us. And, you know, Niagara was a classic example, and I think that the day that, that we presented Niagara to the Fort Bend EDC a couple of weeks ago, hearing them say that one of the important things to them was the city of Missouri City doing something that had never happened in any of their other projects, and that was us assigning a project manager to that project, a single source for them to go to that they could work with, and that was important, and I appreciate their compliments to making that work. But I think that's the partnerships that we're talking about.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep them coming. You have another report next month, you know, with just as much stuff, we'll be happy. All right, item six is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda is printed.
It's a move.
Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Emery made the second. There's no comments, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. 7A is a zoning public hearing and ordinance.
7A1, an ordinance in the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending PD Plan Development District Number 76, describing the 7.42-acre tract of land within PD Plan Development District Number 76, regulating the development use of property within such PD Plan Development District, referencing the site plan, providing for certain construction according to said plan, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, Texas, adopted by ordinance number 0811, adopted on January 19, 1981, as amended, repealing ordinance number 0949, adopted on November 16, 2009, and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the applicants are here tonight to request the rezoning of an approximate seven-acre tract of land to amend the current Plan Development District, PD Number 76, ordinance number 0949, for deviations to our zoning ordinance for specifically architectural and signage regulations. We have a site plan. This is, oh. I apologize. The word that I meant was not correct. We have a site pictures here. This is actually at the corner of FM 1092 and Highway 6, where the current monument sign that the city has at the corner there, they'll be right behind that. The three, I'm sorry, the four deviations that the applicants are requesting. The first one would be they're requesting to have less primary materials than the ordinance currently allows for. Staff is recommended to approve the applicant's request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended to approve the applicant's request. The second deviation that they're seeking is they're asking for a total of 14 flag poles and flag signs on the roof of the building. Staff is recommended to deny the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended to allow for three flag poles and three flag signs on three sides of the building for a total of nine sides, I'm sorry, for a total of nine flags. Staff wants to make a note here that the, after the Planning and Zoning Commission, we received revised elevation drawings, where they did reduce the number of flags. On the elevation drawings that we have received, they're showing us eight flags in total and not nine. So y'all can make a decision as to, you know, how many you may want to go with, but there is a difference between what P&amp;Z approved and the elevation drawing that's before you was in the packet by one flag. The third one is to allow for more signage than is currently allowed. The maximum allowable wall signage currently would be 136.76 square feet. They're requesting 311 square feet. 211 of those feet will actually be utilized for permanent wall banners and a painted mural, which we'll discuss. That's the following deviation. Staff recommended to disapprove the applicant's request, and Planning and Zoning Commission approved the applicant's requested deviation. This is a picture of the other two sides of the building there. And we actually have a rendering that shows an existing Raising Canes in operation, showing the design that they wish to go with. As I stated, they have one more deviation, and that would be they're requesting to incorporate permanent banners and a painted mural affixed to the exterior of the building. It's a deviation because it's a different material from what their standard wall signage would be, which is the actual Canes logo that you see over the front door. Here's a picture which demonstrates, the banners would be the dog, and the Canes in the back there is actually painted mural. Staff recommended to disapprove the applicant's request. Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended to approve the applicant's request to use these very materials for their exterior wall signage.
Where is that one?
This is in, Chris?
In Louisiana, okay.
Louisiana, yes.
You want to have a picture of the one in Sugar Land?
Not here.
But he doesn't look like this one. He doesn't look at all like this one.
Now, on the one picture before this, I only see like four flags. Or is it, is it flags around the other side you can't see?
Seven on the drive-through side, three along the front, and I believe seven along the other side as well.
In the picture you're talking about?
In the picture, the...
But in the, but in the architectural drawing, like you said, it was three, three, and two?
In the rendering, we have three on the front, three on the side entry, and two over the drive-through.
Something you could live with, three, three, and two? It was a question.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if there's nobody else from the public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing and approve the ordinance on first reading, so we can discuss it.
Right. Are we, are we still on this topic?
Now, could I do one thing before?
We just had a motion.
To close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, so we can discuss it. Okay, I got you. So we need to vote on it, to close the public hearing.
But before we go anywhere, tell us why you want all these signs. I've heard why you don't need them. I need to know from you why you need these signs.
We feel that as a whole, we have a complete branding package on our building, whether it be the painted wall mural or namesake, the dog, Canes logos, and flags, that it does, does allow us to have a better business, and it does create more revenue for that particular location. We've noticed that when we have less of the design for our sign package, we do, it does hinder our performance for those stores.
So other than asking, do you have any evidence of that? Anything to support what you just said?
I can...
And let me tell you why I'm asking. Because I sit down and I Google a lot of your stores, and they all look different. Some of them have very little signs, some have no flag. I can tell you now, I would be against commercializing the United States flag, because that's what you're doing.
I believe the flags that we originally present are just the Canes logo flags.
They're not for patriotic reasons.
Excuse me?
They're not, they're not put there for patriotic reasons.
No. The Canes logo? Are they actually United States?
I'm talking about the American flag.
I don't think we're presenting American flags.
Those are not American flags?
In the photo here of the existing restaurant, but in the actual, no, they're actually just white with the Raising Canes logo on it.
I couldn't tell from that. Okay.
And the locations that we have the American flags, it's a request upon the city to us to put the American flags on the building.
I'm glad you didn't follow the advice.
Chris, real quick, can you identify yourself for the record?
My name is Chris Ferrari. I am the representative for Raising Canes.
You mind if we go back to the second photo? Go back one. Is that in compliance with what the staff, with what staff would recommend?
As far as the banner?
Everything.
Well, staff had recommended to not allow for the total number of flags, but to have to conform with the current ordinance.
Would that store be, would that be in compliance?
No, sir.
Okay. And tell me why.
They, from what I'm seeing here, they have more flags than our ordinance would allow. And the difference between having the sign that they have over the door and that material as opposed to the materials used for the wall signage that would be banners or a painted mural, that difference would also be a deviation of the current ordinance, which only allows for uniform materials and styles and sort of a single building.
So let me ask you something. So with our materials, the way that it's presented here, minus the dog and minus a few flags, that's what they have, right?
I'm sorry?
The way you look at it, what Councilmember Smith was asking, I understand the variations and then the color tone and all that looks different on what the other, a couple of the pictures than that. So minus the dog and minus, I don't know, 10 flags, would that, is reasonable for this? Or they're asking for something else? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, they're, they're asking for essentially all their normal package they would get. The flag signs...
Okay, so they're getting, so P&amp;Z said three flags.
On three sides of the building for a total of nine.
Total of nine flags.
Right.
And staff is recommending that?
We had recommended them just to go with what the ordinance states, which is no more than three.
No more than three, okay. And then the other issue is the, is the larger, I guess, the picture of the dog, right?
Yes, it's, well, it's not so much the picture of the dog, it's that is a different material from the Raising Canes sign, their standard sign. The other issue is when you take the square footage of all the banners and the painted mural, plus those other signs, you get significantly above the maximum of two feet per every, two square feet for every linear foot of business front.
Go back to the other picture, the other one. No, keep going. The drawing that you had.
I'm sorry?
Go, one more? Okay, that sign right there in red at the bottom?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay? Or is that still comprised with that certain percentage?
It, well, it, that itself, I forget what the exact size...
Too big. That's what you were saying.
Honestly, I can't remember what the exact size, just specifically of that painted mural is.
134?
It's 134. So that would be right at about what it allows for, the current ordinance would allow for a total of, let's see here, they'd be allowed 136, so they'd be, just with that sign, slightly under what they'd be allowed.
Total?
Correct.
So if they reduce that sign, will we still allow that signage though?
It would still be a deviation in the materials, because you have a painted sign as opposed to a, an actual wall sign that's more like channel letters or a channel letter mounted type.
So even, so I guess, I know what you're saying is even if they reduce that to our, within our ordinance, that's still not acceptable to the staff.
It would still be a deviation, yes.
Okay.
Because of the material that it's made out of?
The difference in the materials, yes, sir.
Let me, can I, I want to continue.
Let me, can I, I want to continue. The dog is a part of your brand, sir?
It's the namesake, it's what the store is named after, yes, sir.
But the sign is the part of your brand?
The sign is, yes. And we do have an option to where we can convert the material of that banner from a banner material to a hard sign and mount it to the brick itself.
Okay. And can you reduce your branded sign and the picture of the dog to comply with, with the amount of total signage that's, that's within, um, compliance?
Is it on each facade is, is, or is it total one thirty-four for the building?
Yeah, total one thirty-four for the building. I want to say each one of the Raising Canes, the ones above the doorways are.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, yeah. So, you're a little under seventy-five there, so they still would have a little bit of room to play with. Uh, but we would still, there would still have to be a deviation granted for.
Amendment.
That very material used for the wall signage.
But you can reduce, the, the question is, you can reduce your, your branded sign and a picture of the, of the dog.
I think.
To com, to comply with the, with the ordinance without having to go through a deviation.
I think what we do is in the event that we would not be allowed the deviation is we would keep the logo sign, the size it is, and do away with the dog.
Was that discussed with P&amp;Z? I mean, not, was, was, is that discussed with staff?
No, it was not discussed.
It wasn't discussed, okay. Now, as far as the flags are concerned, can you do three, is it all right to do three flags? Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
To clarify, you said you would do away with the logo sign. Are you talking about the mural?
No, not the mural, the dog image.
Just, let me, let me finish.
Because what I'm seeing right now, I'm seeing a sign on the front along with a picture of a dog.
Yes, sir.
Let me finish, let me finish. So, you can comply, you, you, three, three flags. You got your, you got your branded sign up there that's within the, within compliance and you just do away with the, uh, the picture of the dog?
Correct.
Is there any way that we can go through any type of suggestions to where they can put that picture of the dog up there and, and be in compliance?
My recommendation would be possibly turn them into window signs.
Turn it into window signs?
If they can keep it under twenty-five percent, it wouldn't be a deviation if you, uh, it would be an exertion.
But the store is named after the dog.
They, they could do that, stay, you can have it outside the window, but they'd have to make sure they don't exceed twenty-five percent of the window area.
Is that all right?
It's possible.
Will that work?
Uh, it would work, but to discuss it amongst the design team, but, um, I could present it as a possibility if it is rejected, so.
Did, did you say you were familiar with the Sugar Land store or not?
Oh, I am familiar.
And you tell them what's on the Sugar Land store?
It's just the one logo sign, but it's not actually in our designed oval font. It's actually just a straight lettering that was from a font dictated to us.
Yes, did you, okay, did you know what the, um, what, what was presented to council? Had you gotten some sort of, of, um?
At the, for Sugar Land?
No, this one, right, I'm sorry, we jumping back and forth. Did you know what was being presented to council tonight?
Uh, yes, I did, yes, sir.
Okay. Bobby, I'm cool.
Thanks. I just want a clarification here. You, you said the mural itself is virtually the maximum number of sign, amount of signage on this entire building?
Yes.
So, that's why I was trying to say is, is it, if you were, remove the mural, would all the rest of the signage, the sign, the sign and the picture on the front of the building and the sign and the picture on the side of the building, does that still, does that fit into our maximum or is, or is that over?
Do you remember what the size on those was? I can't, it's.
Yeah, it's seventy-five plus thirty-six, thirty-six, so sixty, seventy-two, one forty-seven?
It'd be slightly over, yeah.
Slightly over.
Slightly over.
So, instead of one thirty-six, it's one forty-seven.
So, I guess what I'm trying to say here is if you want the mural, you can't have anything else, or if you want virtually everything else, you can't have the mural. I, I, I think the picture of the dog is, is less of a concern than having this mural that's taken over this whole drive-through side of the building here.
The point that I want to make again is, is that I went to the wheel and I looked at a lot of your stores and very few of them look like this at all. I mean, some got a little of the features in them, but they don't have any flags, they don't have a lot of signs, you know, except when we get to this store and the one you have in the town. Another point that I do want to make, just, just for y'all, is when I looked at this picture, I did see American flags. I just want everybody to think I wasn't seeing anything.
No, we saw, we saw, yeah. Well, leave, leave.
Alzheimer's moment.
The picture that you have up there with the three flags and the dog and stuff, personally, I like the dog, you know, and if, and, and if it can, what I'm trying to get at is can we work something out where everybody feels good about it? Uh, you know, he mentioned that you could put the, I guess when they say mural, you're talking about the picture of the, photo of the dog, right?
The mural is the red.
The red, okay, well, if you put a picture of the dog in the window, yeah, I'm just throwing this thing out, but perhaps that might be, you know, something to, to look at. Then you got everything. Can't have fifteen flags or how many there, I can have three.
Let me ask.
I guess, I'm sorry, that's what I'm trying to point out, is you can't have everything, regardless of the flags. If we go by our specs, he can't have the mural and all the signage because the mural itself takes up the square footage of all the signage available.
No.
Or the four other signs do.
Chris, was your preference to have the mural instead of the, the, the dog?
The, the preference for us is that the, the number one priority is the oval round logo signs over the doors. And then after that is the wall mural and then the dog and then the flags. That's the hierarchy for our preference.
And currently, the, the signs above the doors are registered trademark logos, so that's not a deviation that they're seeking.
There was some discussion about the draft and same, about the twenty-four square feet, the drive-through sign.
I was, are you talking about?
I read in here about the size of the drive-through sign, which is pretty large.
Oh, that's the mural.
That is the mural?
Yes, that's the one that's.
That's one I was looking for.
Yes, 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 okay, correct.
Let me, let me ask a question. First of all, is this a one-off, is this a one-type only design just for Missouri City or is this somewhat of a standard for your company?
This is a standard for the company.
Okay. Tell me about Sugar Land store, knowing that you don't have this, what kind of experience do you have from a recognition and a revenue standpoint?
It is significantly less and as discussed at the Planning and Zoning meeting, Sugar Land is not, is no longer a city that we're looking to build new stores in because of that.
Did y'all open a store in Westheimer yet?
Westheimer? We have one in the Galleria.
Okay, but y'all haven't done the one in?
Not a, not a ground up.
Okay, did y'all do the one on Ella Boulevard?
Which one?
Ella.
Ella, yes, we did.
There is one at Westheimer and.
Which doesn't, which doesn't look like this.
It, it's.
And the one in Ohio doesn't look like this and the one in other states that I looked at does not look, no, you said they had a standard.
Well, Ohio's a franchise store, we don't.
Oh, you told me you got a standard look and I looked at those and you got some that don't even look anywhere close to this.
There are.
So, you're telling me the truth or you're not telling me the truth?
This is our standard prototype two. It is the most.
New standard?
It is a new standard. It has also been, we've built eighty-two of these stores.
But they all don't look alike.
The ones of this prototype do.
Yeah, they may be similar.
Very, yes, very similar.
And they don't have all the signage on them.
In certain situations, cities will reject and make us change signage.
Okay, so we're not such bad guys if we're a city that's doing what some other cities don't let y'all do, right?
No, it's consistent.
How do we work it out?
Well, it's the same way we worked out for other businesses, that we have had lengthy discussions about sign. One that's directly across the street from this one, it sells chicken too.
Yeah.
That we reamed over the coals and I'm not going to sit here and give them the approval, I'm not, for stuff like this when we have told others not to do it. You know, that's not fair. We either, we either rewrite the sign ordinance again or we live with what we all accepted as being what the citizens of Missouri City wanted to see. Every time we come up with this, we're in here trying to change the ordinance to fit a specific business. The point I made with Sugar Land, they built it. Now, whether they're not doing anything about it and whether they're not doing the business they should, it's beside the point. You can't sit here, we're talking about the flags. We got a, we have a, and I'll bring it up, we've got a dog kennel that sat over there that we wouldn't even let fly their logo flag until we changed the ordinance. And we're sitting here trying to give a business flags on top of their building? I don't understand that. You know, that doesn't make sense to me.
But, but you know, I, I ask something too because from what I hear, what you were talking about, planning and zoning, there's a significant difference, Ed, with the commission giving their recommendation and what staff's saying. So, I guess I go back to, what are we really doing here? We have so much sign stuff that we talk all night and it never ends. So, I would suggest that we probably really look at it because what I'm seeing here is, is this is coming to council with two, one staff and, and the Planning and Zoning Commission on total opposite extremes. So, I would say the problem starts right there. And instead of us sitting here trying to reinvent the wheel, so I, I think it's some sort of communication or conversation needs to go back or have them review it. Let them get onto the same, same table before it comes up here.
No, but not, not really. I mean, the way, the way the process works is, is that planning and zoning get a chance to do exactly what they just did, okay? Bottom line for this kind of request, the buck stops here.
I understand that, Jerry, but it's not about the buck stopping here.
But let me say, it's not about them sending us something perfect that we just going to agree to and, and vote on. I mean, but I'm just saying that they did their job. Staff did its job in pointing out because the staff role to make sure we understand what does not comply with the ordinance. And that's all staff did.
They're following in the ordinance.
Right. So, so the commission is not following the ordinance?
That's right.
And this is a PD agreement.
I mean, somebody's not, that's what I'm saying.
No, they're not.
Well, and let's, let's identify why it's before you in the first place. It's a, this is a PD right now. So, it's one to where they have the ability to ask for variances and it work its way up the ladder. Uh, first, it does start with staff, um, and staff goes through it, negotiates, but also tries to stay as close to the ordinance as possible. Then P&amp;Z, and P&amp;Z, because it is a variance, can do what they just did, which is grant them or recommend the granting of things that are above and beyond the ordinance. And then now it comes to council and council is now in the position of deciding, um, to go with P&amp;Z's recommendation, go with staff's recommendation or go with a totally different idea altogether. Uh, that's, so it's, that's where we bring it tonight. If it wasn't because this was a PD, if they didn't have the ability to ask for that type of variance, um, it would have stopped with staff altogether and you wouldn't even see it tonight.
Even though I love staff, but in this case, I have to go with the planning and zoning and I commanded them for accepting this deviation. Why I could appreciate the ordinance was created to maintain the consistency and quality, but I think it's ridiculous, go to the point that we insanely overly regulate the signs. Okay, these are business people, the very nature of business, they've been creative. You know, I don't know about you, but looking at that, I think it's looked beautiful. It, it presents our city well, so we cannot go overly regulated interrogating the business people. Not too long ago, we had, we had the, uh, we pay a lot of money for the comprehensive plan and one of the weaknesses in this city is overly regulating. We have sent wrong signals to business community. I think this is the time for us to, to, to be more flexible so that we don't stop people from going to this, this, to, to this community, especially planning and zoning, they took, they have taken a lot of time to go through the process and then we should expect that.
So, what are you saying is that the ordinance that we have now is overbearing, repressing to businesses and that we should change the ordinance? Because we can't do that tonight.
No, 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 I mean, there's no way that you can come up with an ordinance to regulate thousand, thousand, hundred thousand of different signs because each business entrepreneur, they have a different way of expressing their identity. So, we must be flexible enough to have the frame.
So, how?
But, but we also be flexible enough, I mean, if it doesn't, how does that negatively affect our city?
So, how do we do that consistently fairly and in a non-disregarder way?
Judgment. And, and, and one thing, I'm, don't be insulted, but you know, how many of us, I mean, these people are business owners, they, they have retail experience and then some of us, we don't have that.
The suggestion.
You know what I mean?
The suggestion that I made was, um, I guess, I guess it's avant-garde or something that is that when, if you read this, you, you pretty much know that you were going to have some sort of pushback on.
Of course.
And so, and you had no idea that this was going to happen. What I was suggesting is maybe we could have come together before it came to council and say, hey, you know, you, you, this is not going to work, but I might have some ideas to throw out there because we offered several ideas to you and you said, yeah, I, I'm interested in it. I, I, I think we, we can find middle ground here and I think it could be done before, before it gets to council. If someone would just take the initiative to go and say, well, look, we, we, this might not work, but let me give you some ideas. It will work. Can you, can you work with this, this idea here? We solved most of the problems just by talking up here. Am I right?
Correct.
What would the, what would it look like if, if we tried to stay to, to our ordinance, to our specs? I mean, what would we have to?
Now, what I want to say to what's currently allowed, they'd have to get rid of all flags but three. They have to get rid of everything as far as signage except for the windows above the door.
Rather than doing that, rather than doing, let's don't do it that way. Why don't we go back to the office and say, let's try to figure out how to make this work?
Ridiculous.
Well, with that, I think we need direction for the council on, what is it that y'all, I've heard several different answers and, and kind of direction on this, so what is it that's the unified?
Don't worry about them, listen to the rest.
Well, I, I need to make comment here. I mean, we just spent the last year, a lot of time and a lot of money in creating a uniform signed ordinance. We had joint meetings with P&amp;Z, we had, we had public meetings up left and right with businesses. We came up with something straight. Now, yes, this is a PD, we can deviate with this, but this is what I was trying to ask to begin with, is what can be eliminated from this request to get this as close to our standard as possible?
That's what I.
And it, and you asked the same thing. And if we, if we, you said, so they can only do the two signs over the doors? All right, well, what does putting the two signs over the doors and the two pictures of the dog, how close is that to our standard? Can we deviate just that a little bit to ma, to make this thing work?
No, because you can.
But that's what we're here for.
Why did we spend this much money for that? You just started off by saying that we spent this much money doing all of this, then the answer should be no.
Because this is a, this is, because this is a PD, we have the ability to do it.
Just that one sign at the door, I mean, if that's what our science is, then we gotta, we gotta go with it.
I'm offering with the straight ordinance. We went to a lot of trouble with doing it.
No one is saying change the ordinance, they're just saying try to work out a system, work out the design that operates within the system.
I want a list of all the businesses that haven't come here because of the sign ordinance. I want to see that list, but I'm not aware of any.
I just.
If they didn't come, you didn't know, man. They never come in a first place.
Tell me about them then. You can't tell, you can't name me a one.
This is free enterprise. I mean, this is a free freedom of speech. I think this is one form of freedom of speech.
Well, I'm looking at the other businesses. We just had the pet store in here. We just had the pet store in here. What, a month ago, over this same issue?
Mayor.
And we made them live by it.
Let me ask you this, man. What negative impact does that?
I don't want it to enter to my subdivision, Danny.
It's not what you want.
The same reason, the same reason Anthony and his made us change raceway.
We have to evolve and change.
We need to change the raceway.
And retail has changed dynamically.
Yeah, we did. We did. We would not let them put all the stuff they wanted to.
No, rules and regulation is created and we have to be creative.
Absolutely. We changed Sonic. We changed Walgreens. We changed all of those to make them comply.
Just to be sure that, that I'm, that I'm clear. The only thing I'm asking is just take it back and see if you can work something to present to council. I'm not asking you to change any ordinances. I'm just asking you to see if we can come up with a design that will work with what we have, with the ordinances that we have. Yeah, yeah.
I want you to look at all the other businesses that are in that center in front of Lowe's, who we made comply with the sign ordinance. And I'll name them. And they're still there and they're jumping through hoops. And they're still, they can't even find the space to lease. But they're living with the ordinance we put in place and they wanna be on that corner in front of Lowe's. I bet Keynes will do the same thing. If you wanna be there.
My daughter's been dying for you to be there. She don't care whether there's a sign on the house.
Sure is. And I think there is a compromise.
Let me ask you this, man. How many of our staff have the retail qualification and experience to determine the, the impact of signs? I think that in itself had an, an expertise itself, Mayor.
No, staff followed what we voted on and put in place and that's what they're there to do.
The difference is that we make judgment.
But the thing about it is that judgment that created that ordinance came from business leaders. It wasn't just with staff. Though, we had the businesses in this town involved in developing what the ordinance that we have today. So we gonna say to those businesses that helped us to develop the ordinance, well, forget about what you all said. We just gonna change it as we go, you know? I think, I think we need to go ahead on and vote. They got, they got to the second reading to come back with something changed. That way it doesn't keep you all from progressing, okay? I'm not gonna vote for your ordinance because I know all your stores don't look like. And I have a problem with that. When you tell me that.
So the way we have it, what we're voting on is just for them to have that one logo at the front? That's what fits in within our ordinance, right?
The ordinance allows, I think, the three.
Yeah. They, they currently are showing three of the signs above the doors. There are three entrances, well, and one above the drive-through window.
Yeah.
And so there's a total of three. They're approximately 24 square feet. So they'd be about 75 square feet. They have some room to possibly play with some additional sign.
Oh, because the mayor said we made everybody else do it. Hold them to their standard. So there is no some wiggle room. No. You voted high, so just the standard, the ordinance.
If they, if they wanted to add another one of those logo signs that's affixed above the doors like that, they could, as long as they don't go above that maximum four foot. So they could potentially add.
There's a maximum.
But it's, it's going from that type of.
It's a PD. We can think and give us anything and we can.
But a motion, huh?
It's a PD. We can accept, accept the amendment. We can accept it just.
How about the flags?
Because it's a PD.
How about the flags?
They're allowed to have three flags.
Yeah, but we need to.
Secretary is being the appropriate person to address the motion was rather than my staff trying to guess what it is.
Oh, don't, don't. We're gonna, we're gonna take care of it, Gary.
Go ahead, Gary.
Well, you can make amendment, sure.
Well, they can come back the next time and have this all worked out.
Yeah. They can get back with, take the motion and let's, let's.
Well, the motion is on the floor. It doesn't change. We just vote to pass it on first reading and they know that they need to go back with staff and work it out before the next meeting.
Well, I'd like to clarify, is your motion include these four deviations?
It don't make any difference. My, uh, my motion only includes the staff recommendation.
Yeah.
Only the staff recommendation.
Jerry, just in the, uh.
Which is only item one?
Just for the sake of encouragement.
Sir?
It was, it was only item one, yes, sir.
On item one.
Just for the sake of encouragement, if they come back on the second reading and they present something that complies with our ordinance.
I'm not gonna vote for it. And I tell him I'm not gonna vote for it. And I think he knows why I'm not going for it because I told him why I'm not gonna vote for it. And anybody up here know me, know that I'm not gonna change.
Okay, I just, wanna get clarification?
Does the architectural deviation, is that even one of the questions?
That doesn't keep you out of it.
So your motion is to approve it with staff recommendation?
With staff recommendation.
Which is the number, that first deviation only.
Right.
Is that your second?
That was my second.
And then that allows them to work with staff and if there's something different, it comes back in two weeks, we have the ability to vote on it.
One deviation.
Only the one.
Less than the primary exterior color. It's not the signs, it's not the flags, it's not the material. Are we clear on what the motion is?
Just, just for the record, I'm to vote yes because I respect planning and zoning decision.
The motion was to close the public hearing and approve staff's recommendation.
Right. Right. Okay.
And to clarify, staff's recommendation is not the ordinance presented before council, but only including deviation one, not deviations two, three, and four.
Right, right.
So the next ordinance you will see will have those three deviations removed.
Right.
As they, if, if this motion were successful, those would not pass.
And if they get in, they'll have to be amended in.
So there, and there are, there are others stuff than the flags and the, uh, and the signage, right?
The other, the first deviation that they're requesting is to have less primary materials than is required, which means they would like to have less bringer stone than what's currently required. They're, in this case, gonna be utilizing additional stucco.
And staff doesn't have a problem with that.
But they still got the nu, they still got the neutral colors.
Yes, yes.
So it's a deviation from the architectural, uh, as far as regulations, but not the sign ordinance?
And they're not far off from the 33%. They're very close. I can't remember what the number was right now off the top of my head, but they weren't far under that.
We've done that before. That's not it.
And then they can work on something. If they put the dog in the window.
That was my recommendation.
The picture of the dog in the window.
That was my recommendation. If they can put the dog in the windows at less than 25%, technically it's a window sign of the exempt from the rest of the wall sign.
Seem like I heard that argument recently about a pet store, huh? Duh.
Yeah, but they were, they were 25% on there.
Duh.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Been a motion and a second. Everybody understand the motion and the second?
Mm-hmm.
A vote, any way to comment? All those in favor of the motion? You made the motion, Mr. White.
Doesn't mean I have to vote for it.
All opposed? All right, motion carried.
How did you vote, Mayor? How did you vote?
I voted yes.
Four.
Four.
Was it four to three?
Go work on it.
It was four to three.
Hey, don't get discouraged.
Let's make sure she get the vote. Four to three.
Jerry just said he was gonna vote against either way, so that's why.
Thank you.
Thank you. He can work on it.
We are, we are welcoming your business, though. Don't take it any other way than that. We're looking forward to you moving in.
All right, item two, uh, 7A2.
An ordinance says City of Missouri City, Texas granting a specific use permit authorizing the use of 4,800 square foot facility on a 6.67 acre tract of land. And the City of Missouri City has a specific use places of assembly depicting said 4,800 square foot facility, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use. Amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number 081-1, adopted on January 19, 1981, is amended repealing ordinance number 0938, adopted on October 19, 2009, and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, they finally gave up. I'm gonna make this a daycare.
Who made the second? Who made the second?
Yeah, we've seen this spot many times. It's usually trying to be a daycare.
You have seen it. Um, and this, um, if this is approved, this is a request to repeal the last ordinance, um, for a specific use permit for an adult daycare that wanted to go into a portion of this leased space. This applicant is looking to do a vocational school. And this is the shopping center on Cartwright behind Bakery Donuts on Cartwright. The Silvestri Shopping Center. And it's gonna be on the end cap, which is directly behind Bakery Donuts. What's, um, being passed around, uh, some of that information was contained in your package, but the applicant put together a nice, uh, package for you tonight and so we're passing that out just for some additional information. Um, but it is a vocational school. There's a medical uniforms store in the same shopping center. There's another healthcare business in the shopping center. Um, and then there's a UPS store and another, um, a couple of other businesses. Uh, but staff, uh, recommends to approve the specific use permit. And as a vocational school, it would be a specific use permit as a place of assembly for that space.
But this would revoke the, uh, adult daycare?
This, this would, um, part of the ordinance that you have before you would repeal, um, that ordinance for the adult daycare. Um, Silvestri has indicated that they have no problems with repealing it, um, as they sought the SUP just for a specific tenant, but that tenant is no longer, uh, desiring to be in that leased space.
Move to that.
Did we?
There's been a, there's been a motion.
Where was I?
You were sleeping.
Been a motion.
You were dreaming, Don.
Wake up, wake up.
Would you all like to hear from the applicant? She is here tonight.
Yes. I have some questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Camilla Williams. I've been a, um, resident here for over 30 years. I've seen Missouri City, um, transform, um, to a very beautiful city. Um, I, there was a time where I, there was nothing out here and now it's, it's just a really beautiful city and I want to be a part of that as a business owner. Um, today I would like to present, um, to Missouri City, um, a medical vocational school that would enhance it by providing, um, uh, medical vocational classes, allied health classes for those individuals who have socioeconomic issues. Um, those individuals who are transitioning from one career to another career. I believe that the school will, um, revitalize the center, um, because, um, the other center also has allied health, um, faci, um, excuse me, I'm so. It has other businesses that will, um, also be able to network with me. I did speak with the other owners. I am, uh, willing to go and network with them. Uh, we're willing to, um, come together as a unit, as a whole, to try to revitalize that area, that center, because it's been vacant for so long.
All right, let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
Are you licensed by the state?
I will be. Um, first, I had to do, um, request the center first. And then, uh, we will be approved through the Texas Workforce Commission. Um, funding will be provided, um, through, um, financial institutions, uh, Work Solution, and Texas Worksource.
And I assume you know why I ask? Because it's just this past week on the news of an agency just like this that put people through a program just like this and gave them a diploma only for those people to find out their diploma is worth this piece of paper.
The one thing that, um, we.
Because they weren't licensed, they weren't accepted for anything else.
The one thing that we wanted to do first was, we wanted to be able to present it to, uh, Missouri City first and then, um, seek out our licensing thereafter. Um, I have been in the business for over 20 years. My business partner, Henry Toh, who's not present today, um, he has also, um, he has a plethora of, um, of, um, business experience as well. Um, so I believe that, again, um, that we will do, uh, the right thing with integrity, honesty, and provide quality service for the students here.
Are you an RN?
No, sir, I'm not. I have a master's in healthcare education.
So does it require an RN to sign the diploma?
No, sir, it does not.
What does the state require?
The state just requires that the school be licensed by licensed officials that have over 20 years or more experience or, you know, it depends on, um, whether or not you're in the medical field, whatever training that you have. Say, for instance, I'm going to teach a technical program. Well, I have to find an individual who has expertise in that particular, um, industry to approve my curriculum in order to go into that, uh, to teach that particular curriculum for my medical curriculum. As long as that person has vocational experience, um, for over five years, then they're able to teach that particular curriculum. So no, sir, it does not require. This program allows those individuals who are not college-bound students because everybody can't attend college. Everybody's not college-bound students. And so I believe that this, this particular program will help those individuals who are not qua, um, um, college-bound individuals.
And I'm not knocking your program. I just, like I said, this past week, uh, I felt sorry for those young ladies who paid a lot of money to go to class to school just like this only to find out that not only is the school not in business anymore because the news went away to knock on their door and an RN signed her diploma.
Well, you, you know, sir.
And she said she didn't know what she was signing.
Yes, sir. Um, that's with any business. I mean, as business owners, we have to live up to what our mission and our vision statement states and, and that's our goal. Our goal is to live up to what we're stating in our vision and our mission statement.
Can you hear this, uh, go ahead, go ahead.
Vocational and, uh, technical skill is, is explosively growing. I think, I think you're on the right trend. I think what sets you different from your competitor is the word accredited.
Yes, sir.
Because you claim that you issued diploma.
Yes, sir.
You know, I may believe you now. You seem to be a very sincere person.
Yes, sir.
But when you attract people from different places, the word accredited would make a difference. So you may want to consider into applying to be accredited.
Um, that is our goal. We're, our goal is to get approved through ACC SCT. Um, also, I.
I mean.
Um, it's accrediting agency just as, um, the.
Validation.
Yes, sir, that Mr. Nguyen was just, um.
ACC?
No, ACC SCT.
Accredited.
The approving agency is Texas Workforce Commission.
Accredited.
I'm also going to proctor, um, the exam. I'm gonna approve proctor through the National Healthcare Association. What that association is, it helps the student, before he goes out there in the hospital, into the field, they have to be certified. Most, most individuals that leave the school have didactic theories, but they are not certified. We, our goal is to make sure that they're certified before they go out into the, the field.
Have you done this before?
Yes, sir.
I mean, you actually run a school, put the school together?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I have a little bit of a healthcare background, but, but it's real, I was asking. So do you have affiliations in place already, or?
Yes, sir. I've, I've done my due diligence before I came, um, wanting to present, um, this to council. Um, it is a passion. Um, it is a vision that I've had for many, many years. I've worked, um, for the largest post-secondary education school, which was Brenton College, who owned all of the NITs. And I've seen some do's and some don'ts. And I believe that I was there for purpose. You know, there, there are some things you do and some things you don't. And I believe that I was there for purpose to learn this, um, to, to, to learn what to do and what not to do. And so, um, I believe that if you allow me to place this particular school, um, in your city, that I'll do everything that I possibly can to make, um, to make this city proud of myself and proud of the business. I believe that we will enhance, um, this community, uh, the Quell Valley Strip Center as well.
So this is a startup? I mean, you, you don't have this type of business or?
No, sir.
In any other locations?
No, sir.
Okay. Is it a for-profit or nonprofit?
No, this is an LLC.
I thought.
Camilla.
Yes.
And so the Texas Workforce Commission is, is paying?
They're the approving agency for the.
Are they paying the trainees?
Texas Work, Work Solution pla, pays for the training. Um, also the Texas Department of Human Services, also, but those individuals who are, who are receiving Tana, food stamps, things of that nature, those individuals that are, are on assistance that need to transition out of that, they pay for them to attend class so that they can get off of assistance to attend some type of program. Um, also Work Solutions for those individuals who did not complete their high school diploma or have completed a GED. Those, those particular, um, companies have grants of made, that have been made available to the students to attend the school.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir.
There, there's, there've been a couple of questions asking for some information. I like to, I like to see that as well. It was asked about affiliations that you're with. Can you furnish that to us? This is the first or second of two readings.
Right.
Can you furnish that, who, who your affiliations are and also as far as certifications are?
My, my affiliations?
Affiliations in terms of where are these people gonna serve their project?
Okay.
In other words, you train somebody to be a philosopher, but they have to go somewhere.
Their internship and their externship when they're complete, is that what you're asking?
Can you furn, yeah, can you furnish that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the other thing is, any certifications that you have?
Yes, sir. Um, for as the, the National Healthcare Association? Yes, sir.
Yeah, everything you can furnish to help me make a good decision on this.
Okay.
Have you, uh, I would assume that you had an architect draw these plans. Have you priced what it's gonna cost you to sprinkle this building?
Um, from my understanding, that, that building is already furnished.
Is it?
Yes, sir. It was the, uh, Kelsey Sebo building, previous.
Is it still configured the way your plans laid out here?
The Kelsey Sebo building is. The one that's next to it, um, which I was taking over as well. Um, it has been divided. Uh, that building will be divided. I'm taking 1,440 square footage of that, but the, the second building.
Which I doubt has been sprinkled.
Well, and Mayor, um, they have been in communication with our chief building official, our fire marshal's office, and also, um, with our commercial plans examiner. And so trying to, um, have that conversation with them as we're going through zoning so that she knows the cost.
I just wanted to be aware of the cost of doing it because it's not cheap to sprinkle a building. It's not our expense.
You, you asked a question about a certification and, and Ms. Williams said she had to wait to get the building first. Do you remember what that certification, what you were?
Well, I don't, I don't know who their certifying body, because with a lot of those, with a lot of those para-allied health agencies, it could be a number of diff, in other words, who's going to certify ICD-9 people? It's going to be different from, so it's not going to be one certifying body. It depends on what the course is.
No, sir. The National Healthcare Association will be the certifying body, the national, and the school is not approved yet. We're presenting this on tonight to, to possibly get a building so that we can get approval for the business.
So you need the building before you can get an approval?
That's my goal.
That's your goal, but that's not-
Do you need, do you need the building before you-
No, it's not required.
Right. There's no agency that can require that you need to have this, you know? You can just show that you're working with the city on-
Are you, are you planning to provide financial aid and government grant the students?
We cannot provide financial aid until we're open at least one year.
But you're planning to?
Yes, sir.
And, and Mayor and Council, I do want to urge the decision to be based on zoning principles for this particular piece of property. If this were to be zoned with this specific use and this property developer did not go through, another entity would be able to go through without going through council for this. So I recognize the importance of these questions and this dialogue, but do want to urge the decision to be based on, on that purpose. And also, it does have the underlying zoning designation as well, that it will retain regardless of the specific use-
I think it's a great location for a school.
Thank you. Otherwise, we'd be acting as a business consultant. Thank you so much.
I think it's a great location. I think it's good traffic generation and I think, but when somebody asks us for a specific use for me, we kind of go a little bit online in terms of the quality of businesses that are going. And I think that's what these questions are surrounding.
Yeah.
Understood.
It's better than a daycare.
Yes, sir.
There's a bunch of kids running around the parking lot that I'm afraid gets run over. And there's no question, I think all of us at this council want that shopping center to look better than what it does today.
Yes, sir.
You should show the council the picture. It looked very beautiful.
Plus-
The picture at the ANCAP.
Plus, you're going to be dealing with the elderly and mental health and some of us might need that too.
Not training, she's not training elderly mental health workers?
No, the other one, the ANCAP, the one-
Might need your service pretty quickly.
You may be talking about us.
Yeah, well, the rendering, the finished part with the, with the tower, it looked very beautiful.
Now, which one are you referring to?
Yeah, I mean, you already have the final rendering for this ANCAP, right? I saw it, the package, it's-
It's going to look like-
The final product.
Yeah, they're not making any extra changes. So this is what it, this is what it looks like.
There, there.
It's there.
They just, they just did a facelift nine hundred.
I mean, like you said, it was a Kelsey Sebo clinic, it was across the street.
Business curve.
And there was cleaners and the nail salon and that Gladiator gym is in there.
Again, we, and Councilman White said, expressed the way I feel. I think it's needed in that area.
Yes, sir.
But I'm really interested in certifications and also what affiliations you have. I think it just makes good sense to, to at least know something about it.
As it relates to the affiliations, again, approval has not been met because application has not been made, but I am willing, if the council will allow me to attentively have a permit, I will provide the application that's needed, that is submitted to Texas Workforce Commission.
That's just their logo, just a logo.
If, if, and let me help you out.
Yes, sir.
That's just their logo.
If the workforce commission-
Yes, sir.
Does not support your program.
Yes, sir.
You probably won't have a program.
Um, no-
Because that's where a large part of your funding is going to come from.
A large part of my funding will come from the credit union, Works, Works Solutions. That's just, that's just one solution. I believe that wholeheartedly.
Part of state money that you're relying on.
Yes, sir. Grant, grant funding, individual funding. But you have to understand that the amount of the education is not so far, whereas the student is not able to pay themselves as well. And so we do want to, we did want to make that, avail that to the student.
But y'all not doing any licensed programs? You're just doing certificate programs?
We're doing a diploma program with a certification through the National Healthcare Association.
If something went awry, and heaven forbid, what agency would, would scrutinize what you've done?
I beg your pardon?
The Board of Education.
If, if something went, if something went wrong while you were in operation, what agency would, would reign over the work that you do?
If somebody had-
The federal agency.
Yeah, if somebody had a complaint, what he's asking.
Yes, Texas Workforce Commission. If we're receiving Pell Grant, that's federal. So there is a regulator, if that's what you're asking. There's always someone to regulate and come and do audits to make sure that we're-
But that doesn't happen until you get some sort of grant from them. I'm trying to figure out, once you open your doors, who is the regulating?
Texas Workforce Commission is my-
From the, from the very beginning-
Texas Workforce Commission.
They're paying these people to go there. The Workforce Commission is paying them.
Okay.
In fact, there was somebody that, and I can't remember, I think it was in each Texas just last week got in trouble with the Workforce Commission with one of these training programs.
Texas Workforce Commission is the regulator for post-secondary allied health schools.
Was it here?
From day one, they come in, they do their audit. They come in, they do their compliance audit. So they're, they're constantly coming in to the school to make sure that we are following that which we said that we were going to do.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Then I'll restate my motion originally. I'd like to move, we close the public hearing and approve this SUP on first reading.
Okay. I thought you did. I thought Mr. White seconded it.
He did, I just wanted to restate it.
Oh, just restating it, okay.
Just call-
And once again, what, what Caroline was saying is it has nothing to do with whether she's certified or not. The zoning changes the use of this cap to anybody else, whoever wants to use it in case she doesn't.
Right.
But at least it changes from a daycare center to this.
And this ordinance will continue to allow any LC-2 use.
Yeah, the underlying zoning is LC-2.
So this would provide for that, plus this additional specific use.
Right.
But the SUP that's an overlay right now is for an adult daycare.
Right.
But this repeals that.
This would repeal that.
Well, I hope you're very successful.
Thank you.
Keep a bed open.
Yeah.
How bad are they for you?
It's a teaching facility, it's not a caring facility.
He's going to bring his pot.
I know. Bringing back the reality.
He had a hot tub coming up.
Oh, we want mental health and all.
How long is it going to take you?
And I'll draw his blood.
How long is it going to take you to get your approval?
Actually, it takes three months.
Okay. You don't, you're not signing a lease until you get your approval, are you?
I am. Actually, I mean, if this, if tonight you approve this motion, I-
Takes two readings, so it won't happen tonight.
Okay.
But my question, are you signing a lease before you get the approval to move in from the state?
I am, because I'm, I'm, I believe in what I-
You're optimistic.
Yes, I, I am.
I just don't want you to get yourself into a bind.
I, I won't. I, I believe, again, this, you know, there are people that are purposed to do things and I believe that this was my purpose. And so I'm going to be successful.
Do they have to inspect it?
No, sir. They come in and they inspect my programs and my equipment that I purchased.
But not the, but not the facility itself.
No, sir.
Look at your curriculum and that type of thing.
Yes, sir.
You can talk to your attorney to come up with a clause subject to the approval of the city permit on the lease.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Don't get yourself into buying and paying rent on a place you can't go into. And it needs to be, and it needs to be subject to meeting all of the fire codes and all the other things that are required by the city as well.
Yes, sir.
Because I am concerned that that piece next to you, what you're talking about, I'm not, Kelsey Sebo probably was, but I don't, you know, Kelsey Sebo has not been in that clinic in 20 years.
More than that.
At least. They moved across the street, you know, where ARC is today. I don't, I'm not sure when the last tenant was in that space.
It's been a long time, but I will say that Silvestri has been at the table and has been communicating and are fully aware of our zoning requirements and leases being contingent upon zoning approval. And then also, you know, as I said, they've been working as well with our building official, our fire marshal, to make sure that the interior of the building is sufficient to what they need as well.
Okay. Then you can put flags on the top and put a dog on the side of the building.
I don't think it's part of this ordinance.
I'm rooting for you, not only for you, but for Silvestri. Silvestri is one of those strip center owners who feels sensitive to the Texas Parkway corridor and I'm hoping that he fills that, that spot up. He has two.
Make the donut shop happy.
Absolutely. Actually, I, I believe that everyone in the strip center, we, we all enhance one another. There's a uniform store there, there's a healthcare facility there. And so I, I believe that we can allow our students to intertwine with the healthcare facility as it relates to internship and externship, as you were just speaking about.
Maybe get some doctors to move in there or something, you know? They're dealing geriatric care so they can deal with dogs. I'm not, I'm not there yet.
I'm not quite there yet either.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you. God bless.
We won't be so hard on you the second go around. Unless you come in here with a dog and some flags. Uh-oh. All right, item 7B, your public hearings and related actions, 7B one.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the city of Missouri City to participate in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303 Texas Government Code, providing tax incentives, designating a liaison for communication with interested parties nominating Niagara Bottling LLC to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Texas Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Move to the doc.
Second.
And I, Councilman Smith made the motion, Council Marshal made the second. And I guess this goes back to what I said earlier, talking about the Texas Enterprise Fund, or Zone. Are we applying for funding under the manufacturing side?
This is actually the Enterprise Zone. They were not eligible for the Texas Enterprise Fund. So what we had made an agreement with Niagara is that we would work with the state on any of the possible incentives that they do offer, that we would certainly promote that to them. And this is what we're doing tonight. The Enterprise Fund allows them, excuse me, the Enterprise Zone allows them, if they hire 25% workers from the disenfranchised or other areas that are Enterprise Zones throughout the state, at least 25% of their employees, then they can qualify. So the emphasis is basically back to them after we nominate them and send it in. It is actually an application that has to be sent to the state economic development office or the bank, as they call it. And as long as they, you know, and they have to apply among, with other cities too. So it's not a guarantee that in this round of applications that they'll actually get the designation. But the first state is we have to nominate them as a project from Missouri City.
And what do they get for it?
They can get up to $2,500 reimbursed per employee.
Boy.
That comes out of the, the state sales tax that they spend in the state. So it goes into a fund and, so they can be reimbursed from the state fund, up to $2,500 per employee.
And this goes to the economic and tourism section of the governor's office, not to the Enterprise Fund section?
Correct. It's the Enterprise Zone section of the office of governor. They both go, they kind of split and go to the same place, but one group handles that, another complete group handles the Enterprise Zone. I wish they changed the name, but that's just the way they do it.
I know. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to the same body for approval.
No, this doesn't have to go to the three. I mean, this goes actually to the group that is set up and they've been doing this for a number of years. Also Niagara applied and was granted a designation in Dallas when they did the plan of-
You were? Okay, good. So you've got some history with them already.
And this also helps some people.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, Bob.
Because their commitment is to at least 25% of their total employees have to be designated from this type of group.
So do y'all train those people or do they, obviously they don't come with water bottling experience.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm DeWitt Sutton with Niagara Bottling, the Economic Development and Government Relations Manager. And first of all, thank you for everything that you've done and thank you for your support and presence last week. I want to talk just a little bit about, just for clarification purposes with this zone. The Enterprise Zone, apparently you all already have a designated area that you had since June of this year, that we kind of recently discovered that that was the case. Previously, we were prepared to make application from our negotiated discussions, we were prepared to make application for Enterprise Zone designation, which carries a 35% requirement that those that we hire will at least meet that criteria. State has a formula by which they, they track that. But that 25% is what we're looking at now, simply because you already have a zone in place and so we're looking to be designated as a project. That 25% either has to be economically disadvantaged or an Enterprise Zone resident. The $2,500 per job that we would be eligible for is only if they meet those two requirements and they are on payroll during a qualified period of at least 1,820 hours. It's not an automatic given that we get $2,500 per employee. What has to happen is from previously qualified purchases, that sales tax from those purchases that we've already made for that site, the state of Texas comes out, they audit our purchases, they audit the sales tax on that, and the $2,500 per job, we draw against that sales tax that we've already paid. So if you don't have the employees that are either ED or EZR and the 1,820 hours onboard, plus the sales tax already in place, you, it, you know, it's performance-based, basically, is what I'm trying to get to. Performance-based for those employees onboard, performance-based for us for having already made that type of investment at the site through qualified purchases.
Where is the identified designated area?
You have a-
Bobby?
You have a, you have a map.
It's actually, it's a part of the census tract where Lakeview Business Park is located. It's a bigger area, but that's, that's what, yeah, incorporates a larger area than just the business park itself.
Joyce might have a comment.
Oh, okay.
It's Bobby's district.
Close they-
It's all of Bobby's district.
It's probably, it's probably, here it is, part of Chase Wood, something over there. It's in the city.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Sure, the boundaries, it's actually made up of two census groups. Lakeview Business Park is actually in one census group, which is this top portion. If you look at the darker portion here, that's Census Group Two within this one census tract. But the, the actual boundary is this lighter kind of brown here.
Identify the streets if you could.
Oh, sure. Buffalo, well, for Lakeview Business Park at least, Buffalo Run is just north of that. The southern portion of this, kind of the larger census block group is Independence Boulevard. To the east of the, the area is Fondren Road. To the north is Highway 90 and to the west is 2234, right here.
Okay, thank you. You were saying, Mayor?
A good portion of mine is.
That's another one of them jokes of yours, right?
Look at that, it's that whole, he's got that whole thing in there.
I'm happy that the city has an opportunity to provide added service to your company, I'm happy that the city has an opportunity to provide added service to your company, but I do have concern on our side. Number one, legal. It seems to me that if we make a commitment to this, does it constitute a legal obligation between this company and the, and the city? Because it seems to me this is a legal contract, so would that constitute applying an agent relationship?
It's not necessarily a contract. This is an ordinance that would provide them the mechanism to receive this economic benefit. If they do not meet the specific requirements, they would not be eligible to receive it.
And the application, as I said, it has to be approved through the office of the governor, so if there's an agreement in place, we are, we are simply responding in, in compliance with what we have said based in our application and what is approved by the state.
All we're doing is nominating.
But you're going to sign over here, and then is on section five, even though that you said there'll be no financial impact on this, but section five said the city will designate an economic development coordinator as the city liaison to communicate and negotiate with the EDT through bank and to oversee, communicate, and negotiate with qualified businesses, and a list of things that were completed. So how much time will be taken away from you as a coordinator?
What we have to do is we have to actually complete the application form that the state of Texas requires, and we've been working with DeWitt on that. We have a few things that we have to finish up once, but the whole thing has to start with being nominated. This has to be turned in prior to December the first, which is the application deadline for this next round, and so it's not a lot of time that's necessary, because there are information that we can get from GIS and things like that, but we have to submit and say that we're providing this information. Once we get our information together after passing the nomination of the ordinance or the project, then Niagara will come back and finish up all the information about the jobs, the amount of employees, how much each one's going to be making, so that's, it's kind of a combination, Councilman, between the two.
Well, if that's the case, then why it said over here that your job is to oversee, communicate, and negotiate? So can we strike it out for, to avoid legal obligations? I mean.
If I may, that language is actually contained in the statute that provides for this program.
But right here, the city will be assigned designated an economic coordinator to negotiate, communicate, and oversee. It seems to me that doesn't take a lot of work, and would that cause conflict of interest? Because we have other businesses as well.
I'm just going to speak from my perspective. You can have whatever in your resolution that you so designate to have. We do have, you know, our Dallas resolution, the wording is not exact as the wording is for here, and I did provide a copy of that resolution and that complete application for Missouri City. I do want to say one thing, your economic, well, a couple of things, your economic development coordinator, you know, as in other cities, when they offer incentives or make those incentives available, kind of becomes that person, that coordinator to fill in things. From the application process, I do want to make you aware that there is additional, there's not really oversight, but there is verification. The state requires that the nominating jurisdiction verify Enterprise Zone residency. Now, the post, the economically disadvantaged part, that's something that we do at time of hiring, collecting that data from all those individuals that come onboard per the process and the regulations of the program, but the program does require that the city or the nominating jurisdiction verify those individuals. It's a one-time-a-year thing. You make application for the reimbursement of those funds, or what we call the jobs benefit program, which is a part connected, a benefit of this zone, you make application for that once a year.
Right, but why would we have to be committed to December 2017?
Because the zone, by, the way the zone is created, it's generally a five-year zone.
And then we.
That's by state statute.
Okay, I got it. Just one more question, and then we're not exclusively representing this company, right? I mean, we can still do the same thing for other.
If someone else were to come, you absolutely can nominate them as a project because you've got your designated zone already there.
Got it.
It's okay, right, attorney?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? No, we had a motion by the two council people, we have all that district, all in their district over there, Mr. Smith and Mr. Marshall, right?
What'd you say?
I said, my motion was by the two guys that own all that, that side of town now, so, right? You and Marshall. Where it's all happening, on that side of town. Anyway, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor. Motion carries. All I can say is keep going, guys, just keep bringing it.
Thank you. Please let me know if you have any other questions. You all know how to reach me. Thank you very much.
We do. Thank you, dear.
Now, we're going to ask Bob to reach you.
All right, 7B2.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas changing the boundaries of the city of Missouri City by the deannexation of a .687 acre tract of land east of Big Trail Court, west of Bee's Passage, and south of Sienna Ranch Road, repealing all their ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for severality.
Okay. That's Mr. Emery's domain. Yeah, indeed.
They have any questions?
You might tell them why.
Sienna Johnson has requested it. There's a little piece of land out there that part of it's in the city, part of it's not, and there should be a diagram in the packet that shows it's right up against Bee's Passage there along the middle school, and they're looking to develop that with a residential lot, and they want to have it wholly with, outside the limits.
You just want to move the line to the street instead of the, right through the middle of the property, right?
Yes, sir.
And we've done this before.
We've most recently done this for the Watermark Development, where a very small portion of their property was inside the city and outside the city, so it's governed by rules inside and outside the city. What's unique about this one is the rest of the entirety of that residential subdivision is outside of the city, so this will provide that one lot to be treated like its neighboring lots.
Floyd, are you ready to leave this area?
I already just said it. All these voting constituents here that live in this.
How many are going to be in there? Two.
Right now, zero.
Yeah, there gonna be two. All right, there's been a motion and a second. If you get.
Who was the second?
Emery and Smith. He's moving in down there on that domain, too. All right, item eight, our appointment's 8A. We're going to postpone doing this particular appointing of our bond steering committee. Do we have an opportunity to, to look at the possibility of postponing this bond issue that we've talked about here in the recent weeks, that we were thinking about doing as early as May of next year? I think we're going to sit back and relook that issue and, and put that off probably until at least 2014, until we can have an opportunity for citizens' input and take a little more time than trying to jam this in between now and May. And I think our concern there is the same concern that I've expressed at these last meetings, is that Fort Bend ISD's got a bond issue, the county's got a bond issue, Harris County's got a bond issue, Houston Independent School District's got a bond issue, ACC's got a bond issue, and I'm not really thinking that it's in our best interest, and I think this council concurs, that it's not in our best interest to throw another bond issue out there and run the risk of, one, not having the citizens understand the importance of it, but, two, getting it defeated just because there's so much of it out there. So it does give us an opportunity now to go back, and we do have a group of people that were prepared to serve on this committee, and we've got to go back and notify that group of people now that instead of having those meetings, Roy, in a short period of time, we're going to stretch it out over 12 months, meeting once a month, and you'll have an opportunity to reconsider whether you want to continue to serve on that committee, as all these members are, or say, I can't commit to a whole year and we go from there, so, anyway.
I think that's the key, is that those that have already accepted will be given the opportunity to reassess whether or not they can.
And I think the other point to be made is that we still have some bond capacity, you know, that will still allow us to do this so we don't go too low on bond capacity before we get a new authorization.
Okay, do we need a motion to postpone that issue, or just?
You may make a motion. If you have a date certain, you can specify that. If not, it would be an indefinite date.
Move indefinite postpone.
Indefinite. So a motion to postpone it for an indefinite date.
Okay, Councilman Marshall made a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Emery made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Charlie didn't let you off the hook back there, but it gave me sleep on the back row back there, but it'll stretch you out for a year or two.
Which Charlie's talking to.
That'll work.
Oh, I know. Charlie's.
Oh, all right. No, that's right, no. All right, item nine, our authorizations, 9A is consider authorizing the purchase of a fire engine for Fire Station Number Five.
Move to the dock.
Second.
You hadn't seen the price of that sucker yet.
And Chief, may I say you look stunning up there.
We did.
Thank you.
So how are we going to pay? Charlie, you look okay.
How much is it, and how much, and how are we going to pay for it?
Y'all want to handle the question?
Sure. The cost of the truck is $608,712, and this will be purchased through the HDAC contract. The payment is actually due upon delivery of the truck. The manufacturer is estimating out 300 days build time from the day of purchase order is received, so that roughly about mid-August of 2013. This truck will be funded through the Sienna Fire Protection Agreement through the Mud District, and under this agreement that the city will initially pay for the engine and submit a request for reimbursement to Sienna Mud One. They have 45 days to reimburse the city for the cost of the truck, and per that agreement, the city cannot request for the money for the reimbursement until the contract for the construction of Fire Station Five has been awarded, and staff is, is planning for the construction contract to be awarded to a contractor around December of this year.
And what's the delivery time of the truck?
300 days is what's estimated, so we're looking at roughly mid-August of 2013 before the truck will be here.
And we get invoiced after that?
Yes, sir. We do not, no payment is due until the truck is actually delivered.
So we are paying for that out of bonds?
No. We'll pay for this as far as cash on hand, and then we get reimbursed as soon as we make our payments.
So.
This is, this is funded through the Sienna plantation agreement that we have.
Yeah, but they're going to pay us after we pay for it.
They reimburse us.
Okay, and, you know, the problem I have with that is when we look at Missouri City tax rates and what we're trying to deal with now, we're taking way money to pay for something to get reimbursed for, when they have the money, and I know we got an agreement, I'm not trying to go back, but in the future, let's not do that. They want something done, they need to pay for it upfront, because it impacts what we try to do as it relates to our general fund money.
When is this station going to be complete?
We're, we're looking at, once the construction contract is, is awarded, they're estimating about 10 months of construction. I would probably say that we'd be in it winter of 2013, so November, December timeframe is what I would expect.
So is that date that we can then request?
Actually, we, we, once the construction contract is awarded, which we're hoping to do before the end of this calendar year, once we make the payment according to the agreement, then we can immediately request for Sienna Mud to repay us.
So it's not the completion of the, of the facility, it's awarding of the contract?
That is correct. Just awarding the contract for construction.
Have we purchased this type of equipment before, this brand?
We have not purchased this brand before. We have done some research with this brand. Fort Worth Fire Department has used exclusively Rosenbauer for their fire engine apparatus, and they have had very good luck. We actually went and visited with Fort Worth, and they've had very good luck with, with this brand.
Do we get any kind of mechanic training or anything like that in with this contract so that our, our great staff that keeps your trucks running will be able to work on this new machine?
There is some training, but we've also worked with the contract with the manufacturer, actually with the seller, which is Deco Fire Apparatus, and something that takes the truck out of service, they will be here within 10 hours. If it is something of warranty, they will have, be here within 48 hours, I believe.
Actual manufacturers?
Yes.
Reps will be here?
Yes.
Warranty work.
In addition, the mechanics are emergency vehicle certified, our existing mechanics will have to work on this type of equipment.
And we selected Deco as opposed to some of the other manufacturers because?
The, the fire department staff, we put a committee together of firefighters in different ranks, and they looked at three different manufacturers and selected Rosenbauer to meet the needs for this fire station in the areas that this truck will serve.
You guys know best, so.
Do we have an idea of an equivalent purchase that we made recently, and how much that cost?
The.
I mean, because this is not a ladder truck.
No, sir.
I mean, it's smaller than what we've been purchasing.
Yes, sir. The last, the last fire engine that we bought was for Fire Station Four, and that, if I'm not mistaken, was $629,000.
$629,000?
Yes, sir.
And that was how long ago?
That was in 2006.
Okay.
And this truck is a little bit different, that we can differentiate some of that, differentiate some of that cost. It doesn't carry as much water as the one at Fire Station Four does, so there's other internal carrying development of the truck that costs some extra that cost.
It has a draft file on it?
I'll throw something out. If you were to buy the same truck that you have in Station Four today, you have an idea how much that would cost in relation to that?
We'd probably estimate at $650,000.
So these are equivalent machines?
Yes, sir. They are equivalent.
Do we have a separate operational agreement from, from the site, construction, and equipment?
Yes, sir. We're currently under operational agreement with Sienna, because I believe what I understand what you're asking is that the residents of Sienna now pay for fire protection on their monthly water bills, and then the operational agreement is still something for the operations of the station, it's something that we still have to work through per the supplemental agreement.
So it hasn't not been finalized?
No, sir, not yet. That is something that is supposed to be started after we actually wore the construction of the station, if I, if I remember correctly from the agreement.
Because I would be very interested in this. I mean, the thing that bothers me in retrospect, this $609,000 is $32,000 less than what we came up with the 1.6 cents increase in the tax rate, which now we got to wait for our money to get it back. That's the only thing bothering me.
Well, let's see, and I agree with you, but let's see where we are with this.
I'm not making all, I just want to point out, so in the future that we don't do something like that.
I'm trying to get it in my mind, Terry. So what we're doing here is we are ordering a truck, and we're going to get reimbursed by Sienna, and we can invoice Sienna immediately after we get a contract, after we start construction on the, on the fire station.
I would have to defer to the city attorney, but I believe that would be corrected. That could be a possibility.
Okay, so construction starts and, and then we won't get the truck until several months.
Almost a year.
Till August.
Okay, and we don't get invoiced until, till after that.
Till delivery, that's correct.
You know what I'm saying, Don? We don't want to be anybody's finance company.
I agree with you. I agree with you wholeheartedly, Terry. But I'm trying to get the turnaround time of when, when do we get our money? 45 days is, is, okay.
Within the 45 days.
Yeah, at most 45 days.
That's correct. At most 45 days.
Does this thing have draft capability?
Yes, sir.
Handphone.
Yeah, I read the phone, I'm just not seeing the draft in this description.
And the picture that you have before you is a truck that's similar to what we're looking at.
Pardon me, we need it?
Yeah, we need it. All right.
How many seconds did you get on this?
Six.
Five seconds on this?
Yeah, I had everybody second to that one, but Smith and Emery made the motion and the second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
9B, consider authorizing the city attorney or designee to initiate several proceedings against the property owner or the property owner's representative of 1261 Bluestone Drive for the enforcement of city ordinances.
Move to the dock.
Mayor Paul T. M. White made the motion for a second.
Second.
Mayor and council, this is a, a unique provision of the law that we've not utilized before. This property, 1261 Bluestone, has been the subject of continued code enforcement violations that have not been corrected. City staff and code enforcement have been diligent in filing these in municipal court to no avail. The property owner, while present at the. The property owner, while present at the home, has not attended any of the municipal court prosecutions, and as a result, we've not been able to utilize the municipal court process to assist in the corrections through that mechanism. This is a process by which we go directly to District Court in Fort Bend County, file this action to seek a court order to direct the property owner to correct these violations. If not, we can also seek a subsequent order for the city to do that if she fails to comply with that order. Additionally, we do have the mechanism to request from the court civil penalties to encourage compliance and compensate the city for these endeavors.
Can you put these pictures up? I just want people to see that we're not mean people as I'm picking on folks.
I mean, I can put them on the thing.
You don't have any ammo?
Pictures there?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
And most significantly, while Ms. Gonzalez is putting that up, this is a property that has a very large storage container that's located in its backyard. And that storage container violates our zoning ordinance. There are also junked vehicles located at the property, high weeds, and accumulation of garbage. We have conducted multiple health inspections of this property to validate for the court the continued nature of these violations.
Where's the container, Maria?
Maria, that's what I completely...
It's your passenger.
It's hard to see.
No, it's... No, no.
There. Yes.
Oh, it's kind of hard to see on that, the top picture. It's like those things that they be pulling on trains, like a box haul.
Shipping container, yes, sir.
Shipping. Twenty-foot shipping.
Has anyone been in there to see what's in it?
Yes.
Yes, we have. During one of the health inspections, one of the residents of the property was kind enough to open it up, and it does have discarded furniture that's in a state of repair due to neglect.
Are they living in the house?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
I have the same question. How does the container get in the backyard?
It's been there for quite some time. I'm...
Is it corner over?
There's...
No.
Probably brought it through the...
Probably brought it through the, knocked the fence down.
You don't have a box haul in your backyard?
Which is, we figure out, if they are to not remove it, then we'll have to remove it that way.
Yeah, it's probably through that utility.
And it goes through the utility, you know?
Goodness gracious. All right, so it's been a motion by Mayor Pro Tem White and a second by Councilman Lee, and all those in favor. Motion carries. Item nine C is consider authorizing award of a contract for the demolition of the Quell Valley Golf Course facility.
No move.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Marshall made the second to accept.
Do everything out of it?
JTB Services, is that the right one?
That's correct.
And fifteen days, beginning October fifteenth, is that right? When are they to begin?
We haven't come up with an exact final date, but that is the twelfth to fifteenth. That's scheduled. We still want to make sure we have time to salvage anything that we want out the building, and actually, our SWAT department and all may end up training, doing some training in there.
Again?
On that. But rough timeframe, the twelfth to fifteenth.
Is that the slab and all?
That's the slab and all.
Yeah, well, we actually gave them two choices when we did the bid, where they could excavate a hole, a rectangular shape, for lack of a better description, hole the size of the footprint of the entire area. But then we were advised that that may be cost prohibitive, so we gave a second option where they could simply go through, winnow out all the debris, leave the fill and spoil in place. We took bids on both options. It was several thousand dollars difference. We elected to go with just having them remove the debris and leave the spoil there since we'll have to have some fill brought back in anyway.
Charles, this bid is considerably different from any of the other bids, including the number of days to remove it.
It didn't take long.
That's pretty, that's good business. Uh, what, have you, you looked into that? Is that a red flag to you, or is it, you know this?
Well, the, four of the bids were somewhat in a relative range, ranging from about, I believe, eighty thousand down to thirty-nine thousand, so quite approximately twice as much. Then we had a fifth bid that was way kind of out in left field there. But as far as we felt necessary from a public safety standpoint, that we expedite the demolition of the building as quickly as possible, and to go through a full-blown formal bid process would have taken a good forty-five days or so. Also, we weren't, just didn't have any idea how much the demolition would cost. Well, we came in under the threshold for competitive bids anyway, so that was good. And we did still do as much advertisement as we possibly could in order to get as many bidders to participate, and we had nine bidders attend, nine, yes, that attended the pre-bid conference, so we had a pretty good, pretty good interest in the project, fairly straightforward project.
For the council members' information, JTB Services has done demolition for the city in the past. It has been several years, but they removed a couple homes when we did the Independence Boulevard construction, and they did a great job on that.
Actually, they have two, they've done the most recent two homes that were demolished. We've got one, I believe it was just demolished this past week. The council had issued an order.
The biggest part of this job is hauling off the debris, it's not knocking the building down.
It's a lot of debris.
Yeah, it's thirty-nine thousand to take it down.
You know, this was originally under Summit's contract?
This was.
Do we know what their cost was at that point?
They did not have the demolition of the specific structure broken out separately on the schedule of values. It was part of their lump sum on that.
Grant Mackey was their subcontractor intended to use, and they were one of the bidders, and they were about in the middle of the pack as far as price-wise.
So, you know, it, I guess what the bottom line is, is that we're staying pretty close to what the original cost would have been incurred from Summit?
Yes.
When negotiating with these contractors who physically actually involved with these guys, sometimes I'm wondering, I mean, can Sharon, you know, nice and gentle lady represent the city to deal with these tough contractors?
Now, Charles did this. Mean Charles did this.
Yeah, I think you guys should get involved, because we should learn from the previous contractor.
Sharon can handle it.
I think we should reevaluate that. They could change their word like that.
Sharon can handle the role.
She can?
Yes, she can.
Is she strong inside?
Yes, she is.
Okay. All right, been a motion in a second. All those in favor, motion carries. Nine D, and I assume they're gonna put a, they're gonna put a fence around the entire perimeter, is that right? And they're gonna take all the material out onto Eldorado and then?
Yeah, Eldorado would be the route, Eldorado La Quinta would be the route. Yes, sir.
Just let me ask one question. When they start tearing it down, there's gotta be a lot of dust.
They...
They water it down.
They wet it.
They gotta be able to wet it down so that, you know, we don't get all that dust blown into the new facility?
That was one of the items that we discussed during the pre-bid. We had a mandatory pre-bid, so all the contractors were required to attend. It would be allowed to bid, and we went through a whole litany of questions with them, and it is a little bit different demolition project than what the city is used to, and that was one of the issues, of course, that was discussed as well as rodent control.
That's a big issue, I mean.
We don't know what's gonna come. I believe they're gonna bring an army of cats along with them, but those were issues were discussed, and they have...
All you're gonna find is cats in there. You're not gonna find anything.
We may still have the cats that we took out when we took over the building, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're nutria in there. That's, okay, yeah. All right. We voted, didn't we, Maria?
Yes.
All right. Nine D is consider authorizing agreement for Lobby Services for Texas Government Solutions with government taxes.
Mayor and council, for the agreement before you, and you actually have a revised version, I'll mention just to talk about just briefly. Since John Greitak from Texas Government Solutions is gonna be here tonight for a discussion with council during the work session about as far as the legislative agenda, we decided to go ahead and bring the renewal of his contract at this point as well. His contract is up for its first renewal term this January, and so the council has the ability to consider that now for as far as approving that first renewal. It's a two-year renewal. The cover sheet, I believe, I had from January 2013 to December 31st, 2015. That should actually be 2014. So it'll only be two years that he would be as far as that this, and then it would come back at that point for consideration of the second renewal that's built into the contract. The revision that you have in the agreement was a clarification that Mr. Greitak had brought forward regarding compensation. We had originally built him there that for his attendance at special session, that the governor calls, that he would receive the same amount as he would during, when the regular session was in, was in effect. And so this further clarifies that, to make sure that that is fully understood.
May I, I move to that. With the revisions?
Yes.
Second.
Your second. I recommend that we should postpone this decision until we have two pieces of documents. Number one, a summary or highlight of the past performance. Why, I appreciate the fact that we've been with this company for five and six years, but without that, that past performance writing, I have nothing to base on, to weigh my benefit in cause. I need to have that. And number two, please.
There's a...
Number two...
Just from the motion standpoint, is there a, if there's, Councilmember Smith has made the motion. Was there a second?
Yes, there was.
Okay, okay, so I take your comments to be speaking against Councilmember Smith's motion rather than a secondary motion, as we've not ruled on the first motion.
That's why.
Yes, and number two, I would like to have a goal in writing, so I know what to expect. Because, you know, lobbying is a very uncertain business, and as the regulations and lobbying services become more challenging, without a specific goal, I have nothing to expect. So I strongly suggest that we need to have that. By the way, Ed, from now on, for me to vote on any providers, supply, and services, I need to have two of those in order to vote.
Okay. There was a motion?
Second.
And a second. The vote, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Item ten A, ordinances. I'm sorry, yeah, ten A.
An ordinance, the city of Missouri City, Texas authorizing the crediting of updated service credits in the Texas municipal retirement system for certain city of Missouri City employees who have membership in such system, providing for increased annuities for certain city of Missouri City retirees and beneficiaries of deceased retirees, providing for repeal, providing an effective date, and providing for severability.
Mayor and council, this item, this item is in regard to the ad hoc election that we began last year. If you'll recall, last time this year, we asked the council to adopt ad hoc COLAs in USC's updated service credits for TMRS for our employees. Because in the past, we had done repeating where we didn't have to come to you every year.
Right.
But that includes an additional cost in there. The net effect took our rate from fifteen percent to five percent. So it saved us eight hundred thousand dollars. So we've done that again, as you would think. Over time, what's that gonna do to our rate? It's gonna make it go up, and so, but for right now, they came back with the same rate for the second year, five point oh five, which is the same thing.
It's a real surprise.
It's a real surprise.
Move to that.
We better jump on it.
That's what we have for you.
Boy, it changes tomorrow, huh? That's your second, Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem White made the motion. Councilmember made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. It's the two reading ordinance anyway. Nine B.
And ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas admitting chapter seventy-eight solid waste to the Missouri City Code, adopting rules and regulations related to solid waste franchises, providing a penalty, providing for repeal, and providing for severability.
Move to that. The only change in here is basically the franchise?
Yes, sir. Well, that, and there's a changes marked addition in your packet, and we added definitions of how, what we'll be charging against for collection of the franchise fee, the gross receipts, and also we identify who is a franchisee and the regulations they will have to follow in order to be in compliance.
Do we have that list yet?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we have that list yet?
We'll be, we'll bring that to you. It's gonna be a separate form outside of this, but I can get that to you, yes.
My point is, is that...
Of all the, yeah, all the haulers.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, sir, we're working on that right now, because some of those are unidentified, particularly on the commercial side. And we have, we'll begin bringing those individual franchise agreements with each of those in November, but we're working on that list now.
I think Republic probably has that list.
They have a good idea, and they're working with us.
How would we be assured, I'm sorry, where you, go ahead.
I'm trying to get to one real important part. The bottom line is, this cost will only go to the franchisee, not to the residents.
We will be charging them, and then with the city customers that are with Republic now, they have agreed to pay that themselves, not pass it on to the resident.
That's my point.
The others?
The commercials are gonna pick it up.
Yeah.
How do, how do, we all own the place our way.
They get a hundred percent of the commercial business out of this.
Now, there's no guarantee as to what the others will do. We'll have to work with them, but...
But what Republic gets out of this is our agreement is we...
They get the whole city.
They get a hundred percent of the commercial business in the city.
Correct.
And the others will be notified that they're no longer authorized to operate in the city. Is that right?
Do you want to...
That's what this ordinance will provide.
Yeah.
So when it come up for bid again, so this would be bitted out, right, as?
In two years.
In two years, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
So to be, the hundred percent of that would go to?
As part of the bid, or the request proposals.
Be one hauler.
So that eliminates the necessity of trying to track down all of these small individual haulers, because we'll have one.
You know, since this has come up, I've noticed several different companies, wastepaper and office paper, all of this stuff is going on. Is that a task we can, we can handle by identifying all of these different companies?
I believe so. Once we get, again, the initial phase will be the tough part, and then once we get a handle on it, it'll be incremental at that point.
Yeah.
And I do, I do want to point out one thing, and I don't recall if it happened during the meeting or subsequent to it, but Councilman Marshall had asked about...
It was during the meeting.
Okay, about the recycling that's going on over the green, of green waste on the other side of the railroad tracks on Gessner.
The green haulers.
And we are, I just wanted to let you know, we are looking into that and how we might potentially regulate that, and if there are any differences in that type of operator versus this type, and so I'm working with Ryan Stoltz, and he's doing research now.
Bill, also Councilman Wyatt mentioned something about putting some sort of sticker on. Is that feasible?
Yes, sir, and that is something we will work toward.
Permit. That's what Sugarland does with their haulers.
And we're using...
But this would just be for residential haulers because of the commercial haulers that'll now be exactly all as far as just...
Now, if I could get back to my point again.
Yes, sir.
Which was?
Which was, Republic is gonna pay the franchise fee.
Correct.
But those neighborhoods that do not have Republic will pay, somebody's gonna pay the franchise fee.
That was my point. I wanted to make sure you knew.
I didn't want to let that go. I mean...
The hauler is going to pay.
We do not have an agreement with them that says they will pay it themselves. We have, in fact, we are still in the process of beginning talks with them. We wanted to get this under our belt, and then we will begin discussing it with those other haulers.
I just wanted everybody to know where we were. I'm, you know, I understand what you're doing.
Only those people that are under our contract benefit from that.
Right.
Well, I'm confused now, because I thought we were gonna, even for, for all the franchisees, whether it's Republic or not, I thought that the company was going to pay, be paying the city in a lump sum based on the number of users they had.
They will be liable for it, but how they then collect their...
We're not how they collect it, but how they are paying the franchise fee is...
But if Republic is not picking up in your neighborhood?
Right.
And there's an independent company picking up, as there is in my neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Republic's not gonna pay their franchise fee.
I didn't say that.
That company is gonna have to pay us directly.
No, but that's what I'm saying. The company is paying it in a lump sum. They are not requiring the user, the citizens to be paying this to the city, whether they require them to pay it to them to reimburse them. That's between them and...
That's correct.
Yeah, but they will be paying this franchise fee in a lump sum check based on their number of users, right?
Correct.
That's real strange.
Yeah.
Whether it's Republic or whoever.
We're saying the same, same, same. Yeah, we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, we're saying the same thing.
It's just that if we were Republic, the cost does not get passed on to the citizens.
Because they made that agreement, but it's probably not gonna be the case for the other provider.
Because like, when I lived in Meadow Creek, I paid my own garbage. I was billed from the garbage company, wasn't paid by the HOA. I paid my own garbage. If that were true If that were true today, there would be a franchise fee of five percent attached to my personal garbage bill.
And I would like to know, one other thing is that, as we've talked about before, the price to beat is that of Republic, and obviously those that aren't under Republic now are beating that price, so they're paying less.
Right.
Well, I think during the discussion, we had discussed whether or not to require or absolutely prohibit them listing the franchise fee as a line item on their bill to the customer. Do we now require the HOA, the mud, whoever it is that is sending the bill to the customer, do we require them to have garbage fee as a line item? Because I can tell you, mine doesn't show anything for garbage, they tack it into their water bill.
They lump sum it.
Well, they lump sum it into the cost of water. We have no idea what we're paying for water versus we're paying for garbage. It's all one thing, and I don't like that at all.
How does the water taste?
But that may go back to an agreement.
What I'm saying is, in our previous agreements for requirements of someone to have a franchise in the city, shouldn't they be telling their customers how much of their water bill is actually their garbage bill?
I'll look into that. I don't know the answer at this point, I'll have to look into it further.
You know, like Quail Valley, you know, has theirs, you know, has the garbage fee built into their maintenance fee, so you don't see anything as far as that break out.
That's right, not on an individual basis.
It's just the HOA that...
And it depends really on what the agreement is between the company and the person that they're providing it to. They may have a separate agreement that says how they want it presented.
I know, every time we have these comparisons of what cost is between one provider and another, you know, as to whether it meets the ordinance and so forth, that's the first time I ever see any kind of a dollar amount of how much my garbage costs, because it's not on any bill I've ever seen anywhere. All right, none of my subdivision residences know how much they're paying for garbage.
So you're saying that we don't, we don't know whether yours really is lower than the city's?
We're going by what they said, what information they gave to...
Your provider?
Yeah, what the provider gave.
Now, this franchise fee is not going to be...
You know, there's a, no, there's a contract between...
I'm being silly.
There is a contract, and yes, I've seen it, because I've seen the contract, but I'm saying your average homeowner has no idea how much of their water bill is garbage. I think it should be split out, but once we make them do it, I don't think they...
It's saving you the sales tax on it, though, by doing it that way.
Say that again?
It's saving you the sales tax. It's just not separately billed on the bill that you're going to have to charge the sales tax. But when they place it, it does, there's no sales tax.
Oh, then you need to tell us all these things.
But you want to know if we can tell them to do that?
Now, the franchise fee is not going to be considered, taken into consideration when you do the pricing comparisons?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I will note one other thing, just so you know, we have a schedule in there of what's going to take place, and a lot of this is dictated by our franchise fee ordinance, which is outlined in our charter, and it says three readings will take place, so that's, we've begun, we'll begin that process, you'll see that by beginning in November. And the way that'll happen, you'll see it on a individual basis per each hauler, that it will have a franchise agreement with us.
All right, sounds good. Let's vote.
All right. Motion and a second, all those in favor, motion carries. Eleven resolutions, 11A.
A resolution, City Council, City of Missouri City, Texas, amending resolution R-015, adopted on June 19, 2000, granting consent to the creation of Fort Bend County Levy Improvement District Number 15, amending and restating the terms and conditions of such consent resolution to allow Fort Bend County Levy Improvement District Number 15 to issue bonds for certain road improvements and recreational facilities, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
There are motion?
So move.
Second. Mayor Pro Tem White made the motion, Councilman Winn made the second. Any discussion?
All we, all we basically doing is consenting to their, what they want to do.
Consent to their expanded authority, correct.
I mean, if they want to do it, they can really, really do it. But my question is, is that obviously most of this is in the ETJ, right?
Correct.
So when we annex these areas, okay, levy districts stand alone, separate from any annexation, as far as what their assets are, what have you, different from a utility district?
Correct, correct.
I just want to make sure, so basically, it would always be the levy district park?
That is correct.
Or whatever they provide, okay.
It does not operate like the utility districts.
I'm just here to answer any questions. My name is Susan Edwards from Allen Boone Humphreys Robinson, and we represent Lit 15 and work with Colonel Kelly on the amendment and reservation, so...
And because it is a levy district, they are public, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item 12, City Council announcements. I know Wes and I got an email today from the Comptroller Currency, oh, the Comptroller Currency, the State Comptroller stating that the city of Missouri City has once again earned the Goal Leadership Service...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Award for its transparency and its financial reporting. We scored a nineteen out of a twenty-one possible points. Why didn't we get that other point? I don't know, we got to work on that other point, Wes, it's...
We got the poll session?
Yeah. Anyway, they're mailing their certificate and everything. When you get it, we'll come before council and present it. But congratulations to your department again for a great job in transparency and reporting. Your question, your glass is nice.
Thank you, they're helping somewhat on occasion.
Any other announcements? Okay, there's those executive session...
Not on this agenda, this one will be closed.
We have those executive session from the earlier special meeting.
Your daughter's going to have to...
Bringing this back, this is about zoning, we're not here to check the validity of the business, the feasibility, I know, sometimes we, I knew that we were wrong, but I'm so glad that you...
Well, and the decision to vote up or down on the ordinance is based on that, but I understand that council doesn't want somebody to...